Dear Lord, we glad that we're here today to discuss the plans of our town and we really thankful. We thankful for decisions that we're gonna make and the opportunity to do everything with your will and that is just. We pray that all everyone understand that we have to be respectful, we have to be kind, and we understand that this is for the better good of all of us. In Jesus's name we pray.
Salute, I pledge allegiance to the Lord in the name of his sake.
District B, Mr. Charles Bruntford.
Here.
District C, Mr. James Green.
Here.
District D, Mr. Derrick Green.
First.
District D, Mr. Howard Law.
Here.
Good evening, welcome you to the meeting of Mayor and all persons. And happy early Valentine's Day. That brings us to item number three, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Do we now openly use the law to supervise that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting? Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, mayor, or the city employees. Are there any?
Yes, sir. I have got to make a motion that the agenda be expanded due to a filed request to be placed on the agenda to discuss the rescue funding, and I don't see it on the agenda here. I have to make a motion to be expanded.
Question. Well, first question, when you turn the paperwork?
Before I turn the paperwork, uh, it should have been in the paper. I tried to put too much stuff on it, but the paperwork was turning at some time or another.
Okay, so next question is why it was not on the agenda?
It could have been an oversight, um, uh, we didn't want to have all that. I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda.
I second.
Well, sorry, the motion, I'm applauding, I second him.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
What, oh, public comments, I'm sorry, public comments related to this request to expand the agenda?
I want to take a little time, I just want to.
Is their comment at this time is related to whether it should be added or not?
Right, they voted, and they both said, somebody said if it is a motion, we just.
They're supposed to make a public comment before they do it, so they need to make a public comment.
Oh, we made a motion that we made a motion that it be added to the agenda.
Correct, correct, this is commentary on what they should add to the agenda or not.
They got voted on.
And they're going to be asked to add it to the.
Well, we had to have public comment, you had to have public comment before we took the vote on should it be added? And then you'll have the agenda item added to it, and then public comment on the agenda item.
Okay, what way to, please, it's been asked to agenda, you'll never know what you made.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I get you, sir. Is there any public comments related to should it be added to the agenda or not be added to the agenda? Now you can vote, you just have to have a public comment period before you vote.
Is that? Then now we can vote?
Now you can vote.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to have any place to.
It would go down to the, it generally goes down to the, on your thing, wherever you have the other new business, it falls to your eleven.
And for a public comment period, now you can become part of it. Yeah, when it gets to number three, now you have all this. Yeah, when it gets to number three, you can come up to it.
I thought that's what she was on.
They hadn't put it on the agenda yet.
Okay.
I got it.
Wait, wait, just a minute, let's stay with that.
That sits at number eleven, Attorney Jones?
I believe it underneath eleven, underneath other new business. But it's the public comment period also.
I have to bring in item number three, public comments.
Is that time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you all doing? My name is Chastity Kennedy. My name is Chastity Kennedy, my address is nine one four seven, Redwood Drive, Basher, Louisiana, seven one two two zero, to the Basher City Council, council, me and Norman. I'm a former Basher city employee, and I would like to read the information that I just passed out to the mayor, city council, and Norman, the city attorney, and the city clerk. I would like to be going where it's gonna be filed. At the last city council meeting, I spoke during public comments about the American Rescue Plan payments, ARPA, to the city of Basher employees. After the meeting, after the meeting, I requested documentation detailing the specifics of ARPA payments to the city of Basher employees. During my presentation last month, I quoted the Basher city clerk as to the process of criteria for city employees to receive their ARPA payments. She told me the payments will be only made to employees who work between October first, twenty twenty one, to December thirty first, twenty twenty one, and who remain employed until December thirty first, twenty twenty four, unless they retired and no recognitions would be considered. After a few days, I emailed the city clerk requesting the information in writing. I asked her to create a list of employees, including their names, titles, and the amounts that they received. I was supposed to receive the information within a seventy-two hour timeframe as stated by the city attorney Jones during the January twenty twenty five city council meeting. That did not happen within the designated time. However, I finally received the information a day or two later. After receiving the paperwork, I realized I needed some additional information to complete my research. I, the additional information included the employment dates and retirement dates for each individual on the ARPA list. In responding to my second request, I did receive that information within the seventy-two hour timeframe. Now, what did my research uncover? There is a letter attached to this list of employees, to the list of employees who receive payouts from Ms. Laura Hart, who is the CPA of Party Company. I assume this is the accounting firm who hired, who was hired by Mayor Olive. The introduction of the letter states, "Thank you for providing us with the request from city council regarding the remaining ARP funds to the city of Basher." One request from a council person was to research ARPA premium. I did ask a few councilmen had they made the request, and they told me no. They told me the mayor did all of this on her own. This means that Ms. Hart began the process without any discussion or approval from the Basher city council. The city council controls the budget. So how was the mayor able to disperse one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents without approval from the Basher city council? The letter goes on to say, "The ARPA final rules allow for retroactive payment of an hourly premium pay as long as the period payment is not for hours worked prior to March third, twenty twenty one," which is the effective date of the ARPA. Ms. Hart, Ms. Hart ends her letter by saying, "This letter is in no way intended to communicate all the rules and regulations governing the American Rescue Plan Act." I think sometimes people put these slams in there to try to cover themselves. The mayor represents the executive branch of government, hence she does not control the legislative or judicial branches of government. She is supposed to work with the council, not strong-arm, bully, or deceive them. I have reviewed this payout list, and the list clearly reveals discriminatory practices with the payers. Why are there different payments for different people? There are so many discrepancies. For example, gym supervisor Terry Davis's hire, hire date shows, February tenth, twenty twenty two, he was paid two thousand dollars. However, police patrolman Elizabeth Bricksy, whose hire date was May thirty first, twenty twenty two, only received a thousand dollars, and she is considered an essential worker. Cemetery supervisor Mark Alpha received two thousand dollars, and he was hired March eighteenth, nineteen eighty-seven. But Mr. Terry Davis had only been employed approximately ten months and received the exact same amount. I, on the other hand, started July first, two thousand seventeen, and resigned December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. I was shy, what, three days of the deadline? But maintenance employee Kendrick Johnson, who was hired on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, and he was paid two thousand dollars, which means he had only been employed for three days with the city of Basher. Security officer Ramonica Johnson's hire date was twelve twenty one, twenty twenty two, and she was paid a thousand dollars for being employed with the city of Basher for ten days. Police sergeant Cassandra Knaff, who was hired eleven ten, twenty twenty two, was paid twenty-two thousand dollars for approximately fifty days of employment. However, I worked for over five years and received zero retroactive pay. I'm also curious to know, Y communication officer Sandra Alexander, who hire date shows May fifth, nineteen ninety-nine, retirement date shows December first, twenty twenty one, only received one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, but judicial assistant Sheila Ann Huntley, who hire date showed February fifth, nineteen ninety-seven, and retire date showed November first, twenty twenty one, only received six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Pam Duncan, administrative clerk, was hired February twenty seventh, twenty thirteen, and retired November first, twenty twenty one, also received the exact same six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. They both worked for at least eight months during the ARP days and received less than some of the others I've named, who worked for seven to ten months. And why would fire driver Jeremy Defeat, who was hired eleven nineteen, twenty twenty two, only receive a thousand dollars, but the maintenance man Kendrick Dunson hired December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, and security person Ramonica Johnson hired December twenty first, twenty twenty two, received two thousand dollars? Or better yet, how did communication aide Margaret Cotton, who hire date was December tenth, two thousand twelve, get paid two thousand dollars, but communication officer Sandra Alexander, who hire date was May fifth, nineteen ninety-nine, and retired December first, twenty twenty one, only got paid one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents? I also noticed that Frederick Hatfield, hire date shows six fourteen twenty-two, and he received a thousand dollars, but he worked for the city of Basher for at least fifteen years before resigning and returning in that same year. But, but if we're going by the mayor's plan that was recommended by Mrs. Hart, wouldn't that disqualify him from being able to receive ARPA funding? Because you don't, you wasn't supposed to resign, am I correct? Okay, so, reference clerk, Yolanda Wilson's hire date was May third, twenty twenty two, and she received two thousand dollars, but Pam Duncan, who was hired two twenty seven, two thousand thirteen, and retired eleven one, twenty twenty one, only received six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Yolanda was hired to fill, to fill Pam's place when she retired. On top of all things that I just listed, the mayor paid four assistant corners, James Martish, Ryan Floyd, Scott Floyd, Rick Pennington, a thousand dollars each. Last time I checked, corners do not work for the city, they work and are paid through the parish police unit. So I would love to know the thought process behind that one as well. It must be a reason, you know, and I'm just calling it out because I just want to understand because I truly thought corners was paid, you know, by the parish. Based on my research and analysis, Mayor Olive has proven to be very vindictive and financially irresponsible. The mayor has proven to be highly discriminatory as it relates to this payout. As a result of the city council's failure to properly research, study, and analyze this situation, they are indirectly responsible for aiding and abetting the mayor and her fraudulent financial practices against the city of Basher, Louisiana. Therefore, I have a few important recommendations for the Basher city council. Number one, make a motion to immediately compensate employees who qualify for the ARPA retropayment but did not receive funds, because it was more than just me. And number two, immediate regen, I'm sorry, let me repeat that, I'm going to say it real slow. Number two, immediate resignation of Mayor Betty Olive. Number three, I request that criminal charges be filed against Betty Olive for committing malfeasance in office. RS statute fourteen one thirty-four says, "Malfeasance in office is committed when any public officer or public employee engages in illegal, wrongful, or intentional conduct. It can include theft, misuse of public funds, or making decisions that are not in the best, public's best interest. And malfeasance in office can be grounds for removal from office through a recall election or by state statute." Thank you all for your time. That'll be all.
Okay, but I think you were asking, I, 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 I will deal with number two, another lady, but a motion to immediately, you know, the employer who's eligible. Maybe we need to do a research, I'd like to make a motion that we do a research on the employer who eligible if, if eligible for that money to be paid. I'd like to make a motion for the employer who, after the research is done, who's eligible to be paid, be paid, that they are eligible, they fall under that term, and we find, we do a research and find, any employee that comes under that term and condition, they should be paid.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't know where to come in. Last, in last month's meeting, I did ask for a list of not only the employees that received it, but the employees that possibly were eligible for it. So for the red that I asked for that last month, and I have not received that yet. I asked who would maybe even fall close to qualifications. I wanted to see a list, I have not received that list yet.
Ms. Angela, did you ask, you asked Ms. Hart?
Why, why would she have to ask this?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking question. Ms. Angela, who did, who did you ask?
I talked, first I talked to Ms. Hart, and then I, I don't think, I don't think I emailed mine. But I said it in a public meeting, and I asked for it on record.
In, in reference to that, what I would like to say is, um, Mr. Attorney Jones, even though I got it after the seventy-two hour timeframe, I did get it. And when I sent the, no, I'm talking about the letter, the initial list. And when I sent the email, I CC'd all the councilmen, and as I responded, as I responded back with attorney, city attorney, I made sure I was including you all. So once I got the information, you got the first list that included Ms. Hart's letter, right? I asked some councilmen had they seen that list or that letter before I forwarded to them, and a couple of them told me they had not even seen it. So how do I get it before they get it?
Anyway, is the motion passed that we go for research, and if people that are eligible, will, will be compensated once the research is done?
Okay, you have attorney, Attorney Jones, the applicable laws as it relates to all the funds, to the deadline date, and his heart was the consultant that was secured to do the work.
Well, what?
May I refund that? Mayor Olive, I, I, I recall asking Ms. Hart myself about the deadline date with, with, uh, because I had some feeling that it hadn't been done properly, and I think what's going to happen, that's we come up with some type of audit or some type of resolution to amend the budget and then do something to the rescue fund, make the necessary adjustments once we find out who's eligible, you know, because everything was done so quickly in the last minute, like, you know, we're doing last minute things, we continue to do last minute things. I, I think once we, once we find out who's eligible, then by this, I can file a claim saying I'm Basher position because of this period is submitted to the clerk office or whoever it needs to be submitted to, and then, once that is done, what we, uh, then look at what kind of money we're looking at and whether money going to come from that they meet the requirements.
Yeah, also, Mr. Kennedy, the mayor asked approval for ideas of what we would like to see, like for myself, for example, uh, it was a couple of things, maybe like, uh, enhancing the parks. But one of my ideas was, uh, cost of living bonus. We wasn't made aware of the premium pay until it was done.
And that's exactly why I said in my write-up, like, she, she, you have, we have to, you all have to be willing to enforce the balance.
I definitely take accountability. Yeah, I take accountability because we should.
The executive branch, because, you know, how, nothing came through y'all, and she just said, okay, I'm gonna pay out a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and I'm gonna pick and choose who I want to give this money to. I'm gonna pick and choose how much I want to give. So as y'all can see, not only was I talking about how I didn't get paid anything, but I showed y'all my name, names, dates, and some people I talked to, so if I named your name, don't take it personal. I'm just showing you where Jim, uh, got paid, was, was here twenty years and got paid a thousand dollars, and, and Joseph was here ten months and got paid two thousand. That's all I'm, I'm just trying to show. On top of, you know, and so at the end of the day, the mayor just, she just did what she wanted to do. So she's very vindictive, and that is definitely, she did break the law, this malfeasance in office.
I, I just want to say one other thing to, to that, uh, for the council's sake. Because, again, the council position, we got a last-minute notice on all of it.
This was.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure.
Let's not get a dialogue of audience to.
That this council, that this council, that sit here today, I can speak, I think maybe very well, this was only given to us the last minute, and then we, I think it caught our eyesight when the mystery came along, and then we started researching, looking into it. We, like I said, we didn't have, this was not even put in the line item of the twenty-two, twenty-five budget with something attached to it, but I think we got past that stage, and like you say, but I just want to speak for this council, because I don't know about make this council asleep and we're not. We are acting on as we receive it. And, uh, I just want to put that on the record, that this council, uh, we, we were, we were only giving to it the last moment, and we took the necessary action. Our partner came on, she told us some do's and don'ts, and we, we acted in the best interest and the best of our abilities and our knowledge to take the necessary step. I just want to speak, you know, for the council, on behalf of the council.
Okay, you can all speak to your own.
Well, I, I speak for myself, and I think the council kind of agreed that they have a jet, they meant they have up to two jet.
Yeah, I agree.
Did you meet? Which meeting, the meeting?
No, we didn't have a meeting, no, 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 everybody had a meeting, I'm speaking from this meeting. This meeting today only.
Yeah, I like to be talking in reference to that situation.
Situation, no, no, we haven't met, there haven't been a met, a meeting.
Okay. Um, let the record also reflect that Ms. Hart was the expert that was secured. I did not personally go through any list and pick out any names, but please let the record reflect that. Let's move on, we have guests, uh, here as well.
Is it my turn? I'm speaking on blight, on the blight agenda, but I'm speaking as a. I'm just speaking as.
That's public comment.
Public comment, that's not.
Thank you, Mary.
Um, I'm Robin Simmons, I also have handout. Good evening to everybody, my name is Robin Simmons, and I am the owner of Simmons Sporting Goods. Well, I own it with my husband and my children, but it's at nine eighteen North Washington. I'm not a native of Basher, but my husband is, so are my children, but this is a home that I've called my home for forty-three years. We have been in business for forty-three years at nine eighteen North Washington Street. Can you not hear me? I'm very surprised you can't hear me. Okay, I have a loud mouth, I thought I didn't need it. But I'm here tonight to speak about the trash and the blight in our community. It's important to me, I don't live in the city, but I do own pretty much a city block at nine eighteen North Washington and ten other addresses that are around there. And we, the, what I gave y'all is a copy of the list of properties that was emailed to the code enforcement officer on February nineteenth after the Code Enforcement Reform Act of twenty twenty-four was passed by the city council. I personally drove by every one of these addresses this afternoon. One of them, number nine, I could not find, I don't know that that exists, but I think this, the address is wrong, and the number, um, can't say it, nineteen has been torn down. But the rest of them are the same or worse than what they were. And I'm just, in a year, I feel like some of that should have been handled. I don't know how that works, but, um, I am concerned and about, about our city, and I'm very concerned about people that come to our city. Next month, on March the second, we will have our annual big buck contest, and it comes, thousands of people, over a thousand, will come from every corner to our city. They're eating in our restaurants, they're staying in our hotels, they're buying gas at our gas stations, and they're driving through every corridor of Basher. And they're passing some very undesirable-looking places to get to me, and it's embarrassing to me. And it should be embarrassing to all of us. We are proud of our city, and I am proud to be here, but we need help. And keep Morehouse beautiful, I'm not on that committee, but I know some of the people that are, and they are great individuals that work tirelessly for this city, and they get paid nothing. And I don't know how they go about this, but I know that they are willing to help. They're willing to help if there's somebody that's elderly that can't afford it, that needs help tearing their house down. They're there to help, and all they have to do is just ask them. And they're, and they made this list up, and they are tirelessly riding around trying to find properties. And while I was looking, there was a lot more properties. And one thing that has nothing to do with properties, but next to Basher High, the road is torn up, and it's just mud, and I was told that's been there for almost a year, like the road is blocked. And we're proud of our rams, and all these people coming to our basketball games and our football games and our baseball games, and they, I mean, that's a mess. And they're coming down Marable, and there's a lot of messes on Marable, it's not a main drag, but we just, we just need to address that, if y'all would, to try to help clean up some of that. And I know there's civics organizations and there's businesses that'll be glad to help. Um, K, um, whatever they're called, KPM, KMB, KAB, I know that they have grants sometimes that will help tear down some of these properties. Um, I'm probably speaking out of turn, but I think they could probably help elderly people get rid of those cars that are in their yard or that they don't want. And they are a tool that we need to use in the city, and that, I just, speaking from a businessperson's perspective, please let's clean up our city to make us proud, because they're coming, they're coming in droves to see Simmons Sporting Goods and other places in this town, and I want them to be proud, I want to be proud. Thank you. I want to flip out with my husband.
Your pass, I list to attorney.
Good job, Mr. Kennedy.
So you can, uh, uh, you can take a look. And as far as the road at Basher High, it was brought for the council April twenty twenty-four with anticipation of letting it out for bid so the work could be done while school was out and before football season started. And at that same time, at the same time, there were some families who were flooded, but the plan was to have that done. And at that same time, at the same time, there were some families who were flooded, but the plan was to have that done.
Um, but man, I'm sorry, um, that didn't happen because, I think, I don't wanna call his name, but he was here and his entire house flooded because of the drainage. What I said was, let us table this because the urgency was this man losing all of his property because our drainage system was not working. We tabled it at the time to take care of the drainage system. So, and the drainage still, still hadn't been taken care of on the other street. That is why I said let's prioritize. That's a big word for me, prioritize. Flooding, we need to fix the flooding and then we would go to fixing that road. Just because we did not, we all agreed to do that and I told it was my district and I did wanna take care of the flooding first. So it was a priority thing, not that I ever said, don't fix it.
I, I saw the piggyback off of this Angela, uh.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
I asked the engineer that they, he s- he stated that it needed to be done, but it wasn't urgent to have it. The road shut down when it was shut down, so we were surprised when the road was shut down because the engineer stated that it wasn't urgent. He said it needed to ta- it needed to be done, but he, he didn't say it was urgent to do something.
That's a question, why was it shut down though?
Okay, one, one of them, I wanna add to that. We tabled it. That means that we was gonna get back to it. The next thing we looked, it was dirt over there, so if it was tabled, why did we, why did they proceed with the process when we had tabled it to get back to it? So we had no, we had no say-so in that road becoming blocked off. And it's still today, and, and truth be told, the reason it hadn't been done, I, when they got to looking at it, I think the price was way higher than what they anticipated it was gonna do. So it's caused a stagnation, but it wasn't going properly vetted, it shouldn't have never been blocked off because it was no imminent danger to public safety and that come from the engineer.
Okay, um.
May, may I say something?
Go ahead, Mr. Bradford, that I will.
And, and.
You did that in real life, was it Paterson?
Okay, and, and on that particular location we were speaking of, that, uh, it should be open, uh, and Mr. was it Jake here? Uh, who, who ordered that road to be closed at? I guess that's what we need to establish tonight because they've been going back and forth for the last three months and it still looks the same to me. Is there a reason, uh, that road cannot be reopened? Mr., is it, the project manager, I think he oversee that if I remember right.
Okay, I'm gonna say this.
Are you gonna say something?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, it was tabled on April the fourteenth. The engineer was here. Council vote, mayor did not vote. The mayor only votes to break a tie and that was not the, the case. Inasmuch as it was a public acknowledgement that that was a problem with the road, and I spoke with the insurance company. Those are two, there are two schools over there. There are student commuters, there are residents that live there, employees that drive to those two schools every day and the insurance made a recommendation for public safety. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Um, I'm Elmore Patterson, I'm the CEO of Morehouse General Hospital, um, right here at Baster. Glad to be here today. Uh, I think it's an opportunity to talk about, you know, what we're trying to do as a community. Um, we look at buildings that we have, houses, and, you know, we're a good partnership. So what we wanna do is definitely partner in, in ensuring that we do take care of houses that are abandoned or blight and, uh, just try to work together as partnership with it. I know that the mayor and the council wanna do what's right and, uh, us as a medical community, we just wanna make sure that we do the same thing and be a good partner. Um, I, I'm just happy to be here, to be honest with you. I've been here about seven months and, uh, I, this is a great place to live, this is a great place to be. And, uh, we would just wanna provide excellent healthcare and we wanna make sure it's safe. So we wanna make sure it's safe in daytime, we wanna make sure it's safe at nighttime. So whatever we can do in partnership, we willing to do it and, um, and help out because we're not definitely not here to pick sides. We, I'm not into that. What I'm into is the better, the lives of the people that we serve and I'm a man of service. That's it.
Appreciate it. Y'all be blessed. Thank you, thank you for partnering with us. And, and we do need help. We do need help with, uh, in terms of blight property. Nobody's saying that you turn the blinds after. We have prohibition that we have combined by, and we welcome anybody that wants to help. In fact, we are getting ready to launch a cleanup on some areas with some funds, some grant money that I did receive from Representative Frances Thompson. But right now, we're in the stage of working on another blight grant and try to trust that those strings are not as stringent as the others that have come before us. So we welcome you to come to sign up. In fact, we were about to make an announcement, but due to the weather, we haven't been able to put our equipment out to do and we're gonna start it this day. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for your welcome. I am Marion Miller. I was born in Morehouse General Hospital a long time ago. Let me just say, I'm a nineteen-seventy-three graduate of Baster High School, nineteen-seventy-three, so that tells you something. But I'm just here to ask you to behold how good and how pleasant it could be if the city of Baster was beautiful. I think we would all agree that our city is in need of renewal, rejuvenation, revitalization and beautification. Our city, as a matter of fact, our city should be kept beautiful. Keeping Ba- do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, keeping Baster beautiful would help to solve mental health problems that exist in our community as well as the crime. Mr. Patterson just said that he was about keeping Baster safe. That's important to him, that's important to me as well. Keeping Baster beautiful is to act in a proactive manner rather than a reactive manner to our problems. Given the right conditions, the people here could thrive. And thank you for this opportunity, let me just say, to express my concerns regarding what I saw today. Today, as I drove around town, unfortunately, I saw filth, trash, litter, abandoned, dilapidated houses and some of them might have been adjudicated to the city of Baster, I don't know. And this evening, I beg you to hear my cry, feel my pain, my agony, my suffering and my grief. I'm hurting because I know that the current landscape is depressing. I'm hurting because things do not get better on their own. Things get better when actions are taken to make them better. And I'm hurting because what I, of what I see and because of what I don't see. I'm hurting because we have potential, but it's being wasted and misused. We all need must-receive faith. Do, do y'all, do we have must-receive faith just in this world?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Must, that's all we need, must-receive faith. With faith, this city, this city right here could become one of the best cities in the south, no, in the, let me correct that, in the United States of America. One of the best cities in the US of America, USA. And, uh, recently, there have been catastrophic disasters from the east coast to the west coast. Sadly, families have been displaced. Consider selling the adjudicated properties to them. Okay, I just want you to know, I care so much about this. I care because I was born here and I will probably die here. But, but now, I want to live here and live here with a good quality of life. I want all of the residents to have a good quality of life. I need all of the residents to feel beautiful, live beautifully, think beautifully and to act beautifully. After all, what goes around comes around. Behold how good and how pleasant it could be if the city of Baster was beautiful. In closing, be reminded of the words of the musical philosophers, Earth, Wind and Fire. They said, and I quote, "Where there is no beauty, you have to do what? Make some beauty." Lord have mercy, it won't.
Um, I just have a comment I put to Ms. Miller and Ms. Simmons. I have three properties on Marable and, and they're listed that we should enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement pretty soon. So we plan on, we're gonna see a little action.
Great, I'm glad you have that must-receive faith, faith, faith that the city of Baster can become listed among the top ten cities in the United States of America. Let's reach for the top. After all, where there is a will, there is a way.
We do a way, we have some guests, we have some students, uh, student government. Let's acknowledge them. I know students need to be home and go to bed at a certain time. Let's acknowledge the students and the faculty members. Did anyone of the faculty members want to say something during this announcement, tell about student government briefly?
Oh, can I say right here?
Uh, come to the microphone, please, just state your name.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Deljorie Stewart. I'm here at, uh, with my student council members. We just really wanted to come and see how our local government works. Uh, we're at, with Delta Elementary School. And, um, we're just excited to be here and to see how everything is working together for the betterment of their good. All right, thank you.
I'll try to be as quick as possible. Uh, Henry Doughty, uh, seven forty-six Ludlam Avenue, uh, District B. Um, I rose to, um, I basically have one comment, but I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna start piggybacking off of what the, uh, previous speaker said, what they've been talking about the blight. Uh, there is a thing that's called keep, uh, Morehouse beautiful. But I don't think a lot of citizens understand exactly what, uh, keep Morehouse beautiful means and what their project is. Uh, from my understanding and talking to people, I think a lo- there are a lot of people that think we're just talking about up here inside, up here around courthouse, down the main avenues and things of that nature, uh, that where, where we have a lot of businesses. But keeping Morehouse beautiful ought to be about, should be about and needs to be about the entire community of Baster. Going outside into those side streets, those streets that are one-way in and one-way out, where you have a dead end and where you have a lot of dumping. Over on that seat, I think it was the, the area was cleaned up maybe one or two, one or two times before, but as I pass through there now, it's become a big dumping ground. What do we do for places like that, uh, that keeps coming around, you know, every six months and it needs cleaning up? Do we install cam- is that a place, maybe we can install some cameras? Can we possibly look at, uh, heightening the, uh, fine level, increasing the fine level, uh, for liberals? Because that's just as important as any road downtown. And I'm not trying to minimize, minimize anything, but it needs to be made clear to the public, to every citizen in Baster, that keeping Morehouse beautiful is about South Washington, East Madison, West Madison, Van Avenue, uh, Ludlam Avenue, all the streets with the, in the confines of the city, of the city. And I think if we, if we do, if there is more we can do, uh, to, uh, maybe put the word out about that. Because a lot of people don't get interested in things in, in programs like that because they think we're only talking about a specific area. And again, every street, every road, every avenue, everything here in Baster needs, needs attention. And I think that's where a lot of our, a lot of our, uh, a lot of our attention has gotten away from those areas as opposed to our downtown. So again, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that keeping Morehouse beautiful is more than just about keeping Morehouse beautiful because Baster is the, is the, uh, is the, is the seat of Morehouse Parish. Baster is the seat of Morehouse Parish, so we need the entire, uh, city of Baster to be beautiful for Morehouse, uh, to be beautiful. Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ernest Lee. I live at nine three oh nine Carbon Plant Road, Baster, Louisiana. And I'm a lifetime resident of Morehouse Parish. I was born, uh, October seventh nineteen fifty-one at Morehouse General Hospital. I was one of the first babies to be born there. But my comment is in reference to what has been spoken to about blight and so forth. I worked for six years for the city of Baster as code enforcement officer. I networked with the fire chief and we removed about sixty houses that were condemned. There was a group of people who got an injunction to stop the city of Baster and the fire department from using, uh, houses as, uh, experiments for training to burn down. That was one of the things that slowed it down. I personally know there's not funding to bring houses down. A lot of people think the city has money for it, they don't. But the other thing that I came to comment about, I've been following the council meetings and I've heard the mayor mention several times, he's got grants for, to do different things, but I've never heard one council person say that they've worked on anything to get a grant.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee.
Let me finish. I've not heard anybody and one of the things, it appears the council has delegated their responsibility to the mayor. If each one of you worked to try to get some, uh, grants or help, or even within the community, to try to get churches and organizations to network together to clean up some of this stuff, we would have a better option. But all I hear is fussing and blaming. I'm a lifelong citizen. I've never wanted to live anywhere else but Baster. But it's apparent that we have more interest in blaming and debating than working to improve our community. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, sir. I, I gotta come in for you. Uh, back in the summer, we had a municipality conference and there was a session held in Swipport, who's that?
Speaking, Roy, come back.
Right, I just, I just can't even go. I would, I would let y'all to know, to, to, to his company.
There were.
A session held at the municipality conference in Swipport, Louisiana, where this city or any other municipality in the city of Baster will fill out an application up to two million dollars to take care of dilapidated houses, clean up community and also, what do you call it, affastor or something with the heaven? We could apply for, but there was no, no action taken on it. And, uh, I just wanted to share that with the discount. I'm, I'm up to defend this council, but we doing the best we can. I'm defending our mayor as well, don't get me wrong, but we going by it. Okay, but when you come up and say, well, the body ain't doing it, I'm part of that, we try to separate it, a little bit too much of that. But we're, what the mayor tell us, we try to do the best we can because she, she's, she's the cheapest act. Now, if she don't tell us, we don't know.
And one other thing, um, we have been told every, almost every meeting, the mayor's over day-to-day operations. And if I was a grant writer, you better believe I'd be out there writing grants. I am not a grant writer. I'm a nurse by profession. I try to work with the community, but you're supposed to use the expertise that you have to help this city go forward. I am not a grant writer. Our labor is.
And I have one other public, I'm gonna leave it alone. And for the simple reason, when you're talking about grant writing, when this council knew about a grant, it's already written and we never get to amount, we just say that was a grant for such and such a program. P E E P, I never heard of, but that's a grant for. See, other word, we gotta be more, we gotta be more transparent. P E E P. I never heard of, but that's a grant for, see, other word, we gotta be more, we gotta be more transparent with one another. The, 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 administrations need to be more transparent with this ultimate goal. Like transparency is probably the biggest problem we have in our community. And, and, and so you say what the council, they told the mayor, we're gonna do what's brought to us.
Let me, let me read this again. Public comments since they relate to items on the agenda. Louisiana open meeting laws provides that the public has the opportunity to address this forward prior to our taking action on a agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments, and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, mayor, or the city employees. We have, we are now approaching seven o'clock.
I, I like, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion that this council will be given an opportunity to speak, I think it's gonna be a break.
Mr. Bracken, I, I want to make a statement, first, everybody got a chance to speak. Now, I respect everybody's opinion, but when you know the functionality of the city government, that was a misleading statement that Mr. Lee just made. Very misleading, and I'm very disturbed by that, because I get up here every day to do the best I can. I challenge you. Now, you talk about grants, who wrote the grants? Or was it offered to the city of Bastrop? But that falls on the day-to-day operations. What I wanna know is, show me how many grants that this mayor have written since the public got this misconception that the grant writing is done by this mayor. I, 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 I beg to differ with you, because I kinda know, I've worked, I know how it works. And that was a misleading statement, and when it comes to the reputation of the city council, I stand on what we have been doing, because we've been trying to make progress with this city, trying to work with the mayor. And we have met with the mayor before we come into this meeting, and then when we get in here, things change. I don't wanna change the subject, but back to the grant, saying that the mayor is the only one looking for grants, that is, that is, that is, that is not true. Not true and no sense. And if the mayor could provide us with how many grants she's written in three or four years versus the grant that was given to the city of Bastrop? And then I may be able to take a little bit of responsibility for not applying all of ourselves, but don't come to this council meeting and try to act like we fighting about something, because if you know what goes on behind closed doors, if you come to a finance meeting, and then I'll be able to explain to you what we're really talking about, because we try to keep the peace up here and some decorum. But if you really, really know the real fight, what the real fight was about, you would be amazed, and you would be astounded. Because you all, it's, it's, it's two sides to the story, three sides. It's my side, administration side, then there's a truth side. So, the truth is in the beholder, in, in the telling. You need to get, remove the person, whether it's myself, the mayor, councilman Green, remove it and look for facts. And I, and I, 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 I really, really, um, disappointed in that statement, because that's a divisionary tactic. We are here to work together, not to compete against each other. We're here to uplift the city of Bastrop, not to divide. Because when you divide, a house divided, it sure fall. Alright, Mr. Lee, you, you also stated that the council's not out here cleaning up. You must have heard about me. I'm out here cleaning up. Every time you love to move, we, and anything in my district, I'm out here cleaning up, so I, I know that's a misleading statement, Mr. Lee.
I, I just feel like it was staged. I'm, I'm just being honest with this. It was staged.
Ms. Carpen, before you speak, Ms. Carpen, I will say that I am a grant writer over thirty years, and I pursue as many grants as possible. And in the three and a half years, we received over three point, uh, over five and a half million dollars. And they have been for specific things, and certain parts of the grant has to be written by certain people, narrated, then it goes on for technical assistance. So, I say that to not have my character or my professional background attack. Go ahead, Ms. Carpen.
Oh, 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 I, I like responding.
Go ahead, Ms. Carpen.
Can't, can't, oh, oh, excuse me, Ms. Carpen.
Go ahead, Ms. Carpen.
I would like to ask a question that if, 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 if you have, oh, so many, how many have you informed the council of?
Go ahead, Ms. Carpen.
Go ahead, Ms. Carpen. You, I don't think you can answer.
My speaker, can y'all hear me? Okay, my name is Vicki Carpenter. I've been a volunteer with keeping Morehouse beautiful since about two thousand seven. When Cindy called me, and I told her no, and I don't know what happened. But at any rate, I wanna make something clear. You referred to K and V for providing grants for demolition. And I think there's a misunderstanding about that, and I'm gonna clear it up. Uh, I know most of you here remember Willie McKee, is that correct? He worked for the city in his public works, and he worked very hard, but he made a suggestion to K and V and to others as well that possibly we could start, uh, partnering with property owners and approaching them about they pay part of the demolition cost and we paid the part of the demolition cost. There'll be a contract signed by the par, by the property owner, as well as K and V with stipulations that the property is brought down within a certain amount of time, weather permitting, and that when it's all done, it'll be clean. Of course, uh, uh, the money had to be provided, we would pay the money directly to the property owner. We don't get involved with whoever does the demolition work. Now, another stipulation, and Howard Locke even partnered, he can tell you about it. It's a simple process. Uh, we have the contract drawn up between the property owner and K and V. We agree to pay the property owner fifty percent of the demolition cost, we get a estimate, and we give it directly to the property owner. Once the building or the structure is brought down, the property is clean according to my inspection, and that it's done in a timely manner. And we've been doing it since two thousand ten. The first one we brought down was the E W Smith House at the intersection of West Madison. And at that time, it was, uh, South Haggard, North Haggard, sorry, North Haggard. Now it's South, uh, North Martin Luther King. But anyway, y'all, a lot of y'all will remember it was a white frame house, and it, it needed bringing down. And we partnered with the Smith family, paid them about half of the demolition cost, and we brought it down. And the rest is history. We brought down about twenty-seven structures, and are trying to build, bring down more. Drags, Union Pacific Railroad, Morehouse General Hospital, have all been very generous and kind to us and granting us the money to do it. So, and also our, just our individuals that would donate to keep Morehouse beautiful. So, with that, I guess I wanna conclude, because I know it's late already, and, but I was felt like I need to explain to y'all how it work. It wasn't just a matter of, you know, come to us and we can help. It's not quite that simple. And the property has to be on a main corridor, which is Madison and Jefferson, Marable, Franklin, Washington. So, uh, if the properties are located on a main corridor. Okay?
Keep your phone on when I speak.
Pardon?
I said, keep your phone turned on, so I can call them.
And we would even partner with the city. I mean, and another thing, if the city would, can I make one more statement? We've approached several property owners that have turned us down. Now, if the city would nudge them and help them, they've got to do it or bring it down or something, they might be more willing to partner.
And I know you, I know you offered that service to the people in Maryland, and she turned you down.
She turned me down. There's several that have turned me down.
We are currently working on a grant, the fourth is about to come up. And the window of opportunity for grants sometimes is very short, and we have to gather a lot of data to get it in very quickly. A lot of people are cars to getting grants, support level, waiting for the support levels, technical assistance with engineers. So it's not just a matter of spinning out a grant and thinking it's going to, to happen. But I want you to just talk, we're gonna close this out, about what our plan is. With starting in District A and all of the areas, A, B, C, and D, every year we do the, the Love Louisiana. And we picked up thirteen tons of trash, and we need everybody. We need to support the city, and I said this over and over again. Cannot do it alone. There are laws in place, and Mr. Turner Jones can speak to that. But go ahead, um, and talk about what our upcoming plan is and the grant that we are presently about to pursue. And then we will move on to announcements.
Present, presently it's under, under Act three ninety-seven. Francis Thompson was instrumental in getting us a, a gliding grant. We received half the funds. Uh, we've expensed about eight, eight thousand dollars, I think at this time. The, the plan was to use, uh, city equipment and city employees, uh, during, it was originally set out to do during the, the summertime, during our summertime hours, to use some of the money to pay overtime to clean those adjudicated pieces of property that we identified, because it has to be on public, public property. At the time, we didn't get, we didn't get it passed in the budget, so we, we're at the, now we're at the strengths of the weather, but we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to implement that and maybe try to work some Saturdays or whatnot. But we, we don't have the funds to tear down houses. What we planned on doing was trying to clean the lots or the, get the trash up and cut the underbrush, bush all using city equipment, and that was the way we rugged green.
I, I have a question, um.
Go ahead, Mr. De Green.
I thought I asked you this, um, prior, but don't we have the equipment? Does it have equipment to tear down some houses?
We have the equipment, but we don't have the, we don't have the money to be able to, to dispose of it, and if it, if it has hazardous materials, which, which is, uh, asbestos and stuff like that, it has to meet the criteria of DEQ.
But do I, do all of them have asbestos in?
Well.
How, how, how can we determine, how can we determine between the ones?
We have to have environmental impact study down on it.
What's the amount of that grant? What's the amount of that grant?
The original grant was twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand, that's a lot of money. Okay, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, what you asking for? Let me ask you a question, since we're talking grant and cleanup. Uh, in the rescue, American Rescue Plan, I see you cleaning adjudicated property for return to the tax road, we allocated some two hundred thousand dollars. And that money being used, uh, what, what, what has that been approved? Here, if you go back and get your, American Rescue Plan is, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, and this money being here says twenty-one. I mean.
That was just.
I mean, you asking for twenty-five, but you got two hundred thousand. You asking for twenty-five thousand, but you have two hundred thousand in your budget. What had been approved in twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Y'all, y'all did away with the, with the.
No, 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 we did, we did.
Once the budget was adopted in, in, uh, October, that was part, what he's saying, that was part of the budget. So we, after then, once it adopted, we did come back for to, to amend the budget to remove it, so once the budget was adopted, so was that two hundred thousand dollars.
And so, and so says two hundred thousand dollars.
So I have a.
Without council approval, what he's saying.
But I, I do have another question too.
Go ahead, Mr. De Green.
So, of the ARP money, we all received a little bit under fifty-five thousand dollars. And, and what I was, the reason I was asking, which houses can be torn down, because I was thinking, and, and, you can let me know when I'm wrong on that, of some of my fifty-five thousand dollars, I can pay these, the overtime for the city workers to tear down houses with the city equipment, the ones that can be tore down by the city. So we get an engineer in to say which ones can be torn down by the city, then all of us can use our funding to pay overtime to the employees to tear down the adjudicated houses with our city equipment.
If it's legal, yes.
Yeah, it's, 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 Mr. Lee just stated it at one point in time they did it, so it's legal. But I get what, when, when you said the ones about asbestos, that we can't tear down those, but I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the ones that can be tore down, and we can utilize the city equipment. And now what we can do also to save money out of your guys' budget, each councilman in their district can notify or inform you which property needs to be torn down, and we can pay the overtime to the city workers, because I was told it only take like a day, maybe two days to tear down a house with city equipment. Especially if you have one to two, give with three employees, it'll take three days to tear it down. So, so I'm looking at, even if I offer them, I'm just guessimating, I can save five hundred dollars a day for each employee, that's fifteen hundred dollars. So I can save twenty, twenty grand, I'd probably can tear down twenty houses in my district, if those ones can be torn down.
But we still have to pay for disposal.
Well, and, and that's my question.
What, what's Mr. Green's?
Well, I got a question after that one, but, yeah.
Go ahead.
What, what equipment is necessary to tear those houses down? And you asked the question, disposal. Tell, tell me about the disposal. What, what do we need for the disposal?
The only way to, that we can dispose right now is we hire a, what they call a rollback, uh, uh, through one of the trash services, and we have, we have a tractor, we can tear it down with a tractor, but it's still, it still has to be hauled to a landfill.
Let, let, let me ask one more question. What about the equipment we had that was supposed to burn up? That disposal stuff?
We have a burn curtain located at the landfill, but we can only burn, uh, trees and that type of debris. We can't, we can't burn, uh, and you would have to speak with DEQ about that, but can't burn like things that come from a house, shingles and such.
But, but that, that equipment is back at the landfill?
Yeah, it was there when I got it, yes.
Oh, yeah, I saw it. The brush, the underbrush, the stuff that you clean up around different places, can you burn that out at the landfill?
Yes, we still have a burn.
Is it being burnt? That's my question.
Yes, sir. Periodic in time, correct.
Is it being burnt at the landfill? We have someone out there with all the trash that, the limbs and the, the debris and stuff is being taken from the landfill. That's the question I'm asking.
Correct.
Okay, so, so, so just a quick one more question. Do we, do we have a, a dump truck?
Yes.
So, so in other words, that we'll have to pay, again, pay overtime, but we'll just have to pay for the dumping somewhere?
Right, we have to pay the, you know, tip and fee.
Follow me, follow me. How much would you say, just a load, with, I'm, if you've been dumping?
It's done on the tonnage. I'm, right now, I'm spending, uh.
Give me the high and low.
Right now, I'm spending almost three thousand dollars a month to empty the two dumpsters that we have on the yard, where we just pick up trash on the street.
So you're saying, so we're looking at about?
It's, it's, yeah, it's ca, usually calculated by the tonnage. They take it in, they weigh it, and then they, you know, and then they bill us according.
Well, I get that, so, but it still would be like, if we, we able to utilize our money that we was giving out ARP, we still looking at roughly forty-five hundred a house.
Obviously, I mean, I, I would have to.
I'm just going, I'm just going on, on the high end, I'm just going on high end paying the city workers, free city workers fifteen hundred dollars for three of them, cause it take a day to do so, then you, you factoring the load, that's three grand, so that's forty-five hundred. I probably can get sixty-seven houses in, which will, which will be better than nothing.
Correct.
Back to the grant, you said we applied for twenty-five thousand dollar grant. How much does administration fee, that's, that's total about, we gonna get it, or you don't know? Not a fee fee, I don't know.
There's no administration fee then, it's strictly per.
Fifteen percent?
Pardon, there, there is no administration fee.
Okay, okay. I got one question. You said the city can't do, but under the private contractor, we have a private contractor, like, like speaking of our ARP funding that would give it to each district, now, that. Now, that has nothing to do with the city being in any type of violation. We go out and hire an independent contractor to do it and pay it out our, our, our rescue money, American Rescue money. That, that's fine, that's fine, I don't find out.
You have to ask.
Yep.
The attorney of us. As long as it makes the, the criteria.
Because, see, that, that, that rules the city out of any liability or anything. Would that, that's what, that's the way I think would be the proper way to go. Uh, with, now, my district ARP money, I'm, I'm looking into a private contractor, uh, to carry on those duties and labidated houses in, in the community. Because they, they don't have to, they, they'll respond for dumping, shingles, whatever consists on that property. They are the person, not the city, uh, they, they'll have to stay within compliance with the DEQ and all those people. Now, with that said, with that said, with the ARP money, those private contractors can do things we can't do as a city government. Okay, I, I think it'd be more, I think it'd be more feasible for us to contract this out to a private contractor and let them take their responsibility. And if we can receive a bid, uh, uh, invoice, well, you may wanna call it with a private contractor for a particular piece of property that had been adjudicated by the parish and I think I spoke to Mr. Jones, we gotta look into some legal aspect of the ownership. If they wanna sign off like Mrs. Copeland say, if the owner agreed to it, fine, you know, we can move forward. Okay, and then if the owner don't agree to it, I think we should, should, should be able to move forward under our losing law of the city of Bastrop. Because it's a nuisance and a nuisance to our community. We can no longer let the owners who would not take care of their responsibility to tell how we gonna conduct our city. And we already have an argument written since, ever since nineteen fifty-three. And we need to take action. And, and with the fifty-something odd, other dollars that I have in my district, I'm gonna take action. I'm, 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 now I need to ask the, uh, councilman, maybe you can answer two, I need the attorney, maybe you can answer two. With, with this ende, this endeavor agreement, I think, help me here, Council Jones. This, this endeavor agreement, once we take out a contract with a private contractor, tell me the proceeds. Let's say I have a, a invoice or a bid, or well, those are the five thousand dollars, we don't have to bid. Let's have, have an invoice for, thank you, Mrs., uh, or, let's say if I have an invoice for less than five thousand dollars. What's the procedures from there? I, I know you said you have to check with the owner. And then like, I asked a question because the city has adjudicated property too that we need to get rid of. We don't clean our house, we can't expect anybody else to clean their house.
Just related, Mr. Locke, if you would allow Mrs. Mary Jones to add this one.
So whenever you have a property that has a dangerous structure on it, something you want to demolish or something like that, it has to either, we either have to have the homeowner consent to it, okay? And at that point, if they consent to it, we'd have to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the owner whereby we transfer the funds to them to, to take care of that. Because there's been no, there's been no hearing in front of us to condemn it. It's not condemned, we're bypassing condemning procedures.
As long as it's not five thousand.
Well, it can always be over five thousand.
It can be over five, okay.
Public works is what requires bidding. Now, the, the legislative order is gonna tell you in situations where it's below two hundred fifty thousand or above five thousand dollars, that they would like to see you have three bids or requests or proposals, but that's just their recommendation, it's not a requirement. Uh, so, but to circle me through the condemning procedure, you'd have to have to consent to the owner that a cooperative endeavor agreement where we transfer to a contractor money to reimburse for the cost to demolish. So that would go property by property in order to do that. Now, talking about adjudicated properties that Mr. Locke is talking about. Adjudicated properties are not in our name, they're not our properties, they're still our owner's properties. Because the, in order for a property that is adjudicated to be actually titled to the city of Bastrop, you have to pass an ordinance, have it served, and all the people have an interest in it. And then once sixty days is run from there, then the property becomes actually titled to the city of Bastrop. It's just simply we have a ownership interest in it or a, but not a possessor's right. We just have a stake in the money. They can actually get, uh, let's say a property's been adjudicated, which you often see, and they go to sell it. We never actually have the title put in our name, we just transferred our ability to do it over to the private company who then sold it. But so if a property says adjudicated to the parish or to the city, you can still redeem that until the title is quieted through that ordinance and that title process.
So, so the, so the property is adjudicated to the city, you're saying that it cannot be torn down by the city?
No, because you're not the owner of it.
But, but, but if it's a nuisance too.
But it's, it's, the only thing that's adjudicated is not the property, the tax money that's owed has been adjudicated.
But with the tax, with the taxes, it's, it's come along the property.
No, it does.
So, so what's, what's the difference in the process of when somebody go purchase adjudicated property?
So what they do is they.
They purchase it.
They purchase our right in it, and then we pass, that's why it comes before you for the ordinance and the sale.
Become, yeah, giving the city the, the right to sell it.
Gives the city the right to sell it, but it doesn't give us, we don't have the possessory right, we just have an, we have an interest in it. We haven't officially given notice to those owners per the law, which requires us to pass an ordinance saying, yes, we're taking actual title that.
What's the, so what's the point of the, what's the point of the, the E and P consultant if the city don't own the property?
Because they're selling our right to have that property. If you take on the property by quieting the title, then you take on the liability of that property.
So, so who, who property, so who property is it?
The property owner who's, who's the listed property owner down at the.
Even after we, even after we adjudicated.
It's not, the only reason why it adjudicates is because the taxes have a little priority. Adjudication does not transfer title. Adjudication just gives you the right to go in and you can take title from them by filing, you have to pass an ordinance here at the council. Then that ordinance has to be served on the owners, and then sixty days from there, that's what I said. Adjudication is just the taxes. It's not, it's the, you have the right to do it, but it doesn't mean that it transfers title. You have the right to get title transferred to you, but you have to exercise that one.
O, o, okay, so my next question is, the, the houses that the city can't tear down, being that they sta, they stated that they will be working on service. So if, if some of the houses that's in our district that can be torn down with, with our ARP funded, instead of the city paying them for overtime, can we pay them overtime for tearing down the houses that can be torn down in our district?
Yeah, you, you can, you can, you can have your funds, expense, pay overtime hours.
So, so Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Wait just a minute, go ahead, Mr. D Green.
Mr. Jake and Mr. Bob, can you please see the houses in my district that can be torn down, our district, that can be torn down by the city and let us know?
You received, uh, a handed, handed list of properties.
But them was. They, they're prisoners.
Did you see anything that's, that's in your district?
Yeah.
I got, I, I know this, I know this.
Okay.
It's, it's adjudicated property.
And that's, that's the reason I ask, because, because there's no difference in any one of us purchasing adjudicated property. Once we get, once we get, because we really don't get a title because it's adjudicated, but we get that said property.
We don't have that property until you get the title. What we have is we have the, the right to get the title, we never go in and exercise it in the.
So what do we need to do? And I know we're getting off, what do we need to do in order to get that property to ownership to the city?
We would have to, we'd have to pass an ordinance for each property, or we could probably do, we'd have to pass an ordinance for each property. We'd have to give notice to them, there's a specific notice in the state law that you give to all the registered owners of the property, tell them that sixty days before this ordinance goes into effect, come back and redeem the property.
Do, do we have, the E and P give notice of, that's the purpose of E and, E and P, we don't have to give notice.
E and P gives notice, that's what's in that ordinance when it comes through.
But can we have that ordinance written by you?
Yes, yes, I can, and that's what, so when they call these, on these properties that are thing, they ask me what the title is. I go run the title and see what they are, if it's adjudicated, and the notice is in the law, it's, it's actually specifically in forty-seven, twenty-two, thirty-six.
So, 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 so Jake and.
Is the difference between having a right and exercising that right? You have the right to remain silent, not a lot of people exercise it. Uh, it, it, you, a right gives you the ability to exercise something. We have the right, once the taxes lapse, it becomes adjudicated taxes.
So what's, what's the purpose, if, if we don't own that, that said property, what's the purpose of cleaning up the property?
Well, it's because it's property that is, uh, obviously property that is in, uh, disrepair or condition like that. But yes, adjudicated property, unless we have passed an ordinance passing that title to us, we have the right to do it, we just don't exercise it.
So you're saying, even though we don't own that property, we can go on that, that said property and clean up, but we can't do that?
Well, you can go, you can go on that property and clean it up if you send out the notices as your property's settled back.
So we can do the same thing for tearing it down?
Same thing that you can do for a property that's occupied.
I want that, but I'm, 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 I'm making sure you're right, Mr. Brown. Could, could you, uh, get our charter and put it up there and pull up the nuisance clause?
I understand, I, I, yes, there is, there is a part of our charter that talks about this.
That nuisance clause, I understand, tell me correctly if I'm wrong. The nuisance clause says the city of Bastrop can take any action necessary if they, that they declare that the property is a nuisance, a health hazard. I don't care if adjudicated or not adjudicated. If it's a health hazard, uh, 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 so large to the community, and we have a lot of that, uh, so large to the community, the city of Bastrop can go in, clean it up, or demolid, we just can't take tighter of the property. Do I understand that right?
Yes, you are reading that right. However, the general laws of the state of Louisiana that involve what is considered code enforcement ordinances and furthermore demolition ordinances to destroy something, the general, your charter bows to the general laws of the state. Now, specific laws like Larson Act, your charter trumps that, but your charter bows to the general laws of the state. The general laws of the state require a procedure and a process that we now have adopted in the ordinances to reflect the general laws. But yes, the charter does, does say that provision, that is correct. However, that provision is invalid by state general law.
In other word, and we would want to go, and we would want to go to one of the sites here downtown, the, next to the bank about a post office, and, and the city would want to say, hey, this is a nuisance, a danger to the sidewalk, a health hazard to this community, send them a notice to that effect, I think we had some of these procedures. And if they do not act, then we have the right to go again and do it on our charter and be saying.
Correct, you have, you have it underneath your ordinances that, that mirror the state general law.
We, we, okay, we, we can do that.
And it's one of the hazards of having a nineteen fifty-six charter and, and state laws that are amended every year.
Okay, do we need to amend our, our charter's fact? But what, what, what are we waiting on to do that, I guess? I mean, you, I had to put you on there, but anyway, we got two hundred, we got two hundred thousand dollars, uh, allocated for a cleanup and to do this stuff. And we, and to beautify our community, because I think everybody wants to see Bastrop beautified. I heard the young lady speaking, I think we all on the same page. We want to see our community beautified for businesses and stuff to come in here. Why can't we move forward and we got two hundred thousand dollars? I mean, we could use private contractors, or we could use our city workers. I mean, but once we send these notices out to these property owners, we cannot continue to let them turn their nose up to this community as we go down.
And as many, as properties come to the legal department, I brought them before y'all, every property that's come now brought it to you. And I will point to you in your Code of Reform, uh, Act that was passed, there is a provision in there that authorizes the administration to go ahead and contract with anybody without having to have approval of the council. That was done to expedite stuff so that you didn't have to bring them. So, so if somebody would need to mow yard, you didn't want to have to bring it here.
Downtown, who in downtown district? Man, hey, did you, did you, I just had a question because I want to understand what Mr. Jones is saying. Uh, Mr. Green, D Green, he's saying that with your rescue money, if you could get somebody to clean up downtown, plus your district downtown, which was mine, uh, downtown, uh, which is your district, you could go ahead and hire a private contractor, stop me, Mr. Jones, I'm wrong. Go ahead and hire a private contractor to remove some of these buildings, under, 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 under the nuisance, under the nuisance clause, under the nuisance clause.
Well, you really are.
We, 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 I want to hear what you're trying to do there.
I can't picture it.
Since the charter provision on nuisance was out of date, we brought it up to date with the Code of Reform. So that provision would probably at some point need to be revised in the charter, except you have to go to the governor, then to the legislature, it's just too lengthy. So we updated with the code of ordinances, which is the Code of Reform.
Okay, we gonna move on, I, I'll make that just clear, what we can do.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Um, Mr. Jay Green wanted to make a statement. We are now at seven thirty, and we, and we, I need to ask, and we take this out of order. We have our field of water manager here, he has a small child at home. So if we can quickly do his resolutions after Mr. Jay Green, I'm gonna ask if you take this agenda out of order. He is small, my. Let, let, let Mr. Jay Green.
Okay, I'll be working.
Let, let Mr. Jay Green go ahead and make his statement.
Yes, you got, you got, okay, I got one question. I'm not referring to you, Katie, from.
Yes.
Okay, well, the people that fall out of compliance, with our orders, we provide a mechanism, we can go in and find those people. Well, what, what is preventing the city from actually implementing what we passed?
We have, we have the Code of Reform Act, it gets us two hours to go, you can go to environmental court, or you can go in and send the notices and, and do it itself. Legally, there is not an amendment.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at, so, we, we, we spent this time to pass the laws, to enact the laws. Now it's time for us to enforce the laws, which comes out to day-to-day operation because, like you say, you continuously let the people thumb their nose up at us, they not, don't do anything, we can send them to environmental court. I'm talking about the code enforcement, we can get those people to environmental court and actually find them, right? Don't we have a.
Correct, the issue, and I will say this, the issue with environmental court requires participation of others. They don't show up, it's not a criminal court, it's a civil court.
Okay, so I got, as you said, that, so if we, we panel a, a, a judge, but they refuse to come, so we gonna continue to pay a judge a thousand dollars a month for no activity?
That's why there's, correct, that is correct, first off. The second thing is, is that's why there's dual prompts, because if, to get people to participate, you, generally speaking, you would take care of the properties and assess them with the tax lien through the way that doesn't go through there. And then people realize work's going to occur, bills are going to pile up on their property. And so the people who are here, because a lot of these properties, the people are far away, they're gone, like, you're not gonna get the back. So you're gonna have to put the lien on the property, go the way that's not environmental. For the people who are here, who might have fixed incomes, might have something, might have some limitations that need time to clean it up furthermore than the ten or fifteen days that's granted in the ordinance, they can come to environmental court, explain to judge what's going on, what's happening, and that person can say, okay, we're gonna work with you, but you gotta show us some progress. So that requires voluntary participation, but historically, in the year and a half leading up to our change, there just was very low participation in environmental court. So the concept was to get them to see that we were doing things where we didn't give them to environmental court. And then the people who were here would say, oh, I'm gonna go, because I'd rather have more time than fifteen days.
What I'm getting at is, if people get the misconception that you fight, we, we, we trying to come up with solutions. Because we have enacted the laws and we've been stagnating, nothing has been done. It's not blame game, the end game is to get results. And we, and there's no results being, there's no results. So are we supposed to just keep sitting here and just playing like something is getting done when it's not getting done? That's what I'm asking you a question. We're paying a judge, we got environmental, uh, officer, code enforcement. There has not been any citations written, not to my knowledge, of private owners, I'm not talking about adjudicated property. So what I'm saying is, we're looking for solutions, we're looking for to fix the problem. We got the laws enacted on the book. Now, we gotta find a way to complete the cycle. If you got the laws, why not go enforce the laws? That's why I ask you which way to, which is the best way to go. Well, my point is, you say environmental court takes a little long. Well, what about the other, why get into that other avenue being pursued? What is the problem? I'm, I'm just, just asking you as an attorney, what is the problem? You, you say this way is long, so it, I, I'm, 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 I'm going back to what I originally stated.
It, it's a two, it's a two-step thing, if one way's not gonna work, you have the other way to it.
Well, well, ain't no way work.
Right, all I do is, all I do is put the, put the laws up here and work off what's given to me.
Well, I just want, I just want people to understand that there's no, we, we're not impeding progress. We actually passed the laws so the laws can get done, we've done our part, we not want, we don't want to blame it, because we are community, we just want some results, and we just, you know, ask questions. It's not bickering and fighting, if you never ask questions, you never gonna get results. So I just wanna know which is the best way to get it done.
If you have a, if you have a property, I would tell you, from a legal standpoint, if you have a property where the owner is absent or is not responsive to anything, then I would do the method of which you send the notices out, the, you undertake doing the work yourself, you place the lien on the property. If you have an owner who is present and who is responsive, who might need more time, then send them to environmental court where they can talk with the judge each month, that's the two avenues to go.
I got one other, one other thing that I'll let you go into, whatever you going right now, I got one question, because we talked about wasteful spending. You spending about three, in, in three years, you spent about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars between code enforcement, the secretary, and the judge. That's three years, a bit of figures, so you spending that type of money with no results. And when I, I'm, when I say no results, I mean no results, I'm talking about no fines, I can't find a fine, if you, if I'm wrong, please tell me who I'm wrong. Has it been a fine in the last three years?
Yes, I started in January of twenty twenty-three, I'm not aware of one, but prior to.
I'm, I, I, I say, I say three years, have it, have it been a fine given in the last three years?
If there was one given in environmental court, it was done without any authority to do it. So I can tell you during my term, no, but I can tell you if there was one given in environmental court, there's no authority to do it.
We just want some, we just wanna get together and come up with a, solve problems, not try to pass blame, we just wanna get together and work, put improvement in the city.
Well, absolutely.
And this ain't working with environmental, the way the structure's set up, it's not working.
A lot of people aren't being arrested.
Okay.
I had, I just had a comment, we, um, we talk a whole lot. And we took time to pass these laws, but the bottom line, no citations have been written, nothing. You don't take step one, how you gonna get to step two? You will never have an active environmental court if no citations are ever written. So, we just sitting around like Mr. Green said, wasting money. Wasting money in our community is horrible. I talked to somebody the other day, and excuse was given to me, they wanted to know why tickets hadn't been, citations hadn't been written. They said they called, talked to somebody, the reason that was given to them was something about a city garage. I said, sir, you have to be kidding, you must have misunderstood, nobody told, I don't believe anybody told you that. Because what would a city garage have to do with writing citations, and somebody going to, at, at, uh, environmental court? Sound like a bunch of excuses, that's all we giving people, excuses, and I get tired of getting blamed for things that I have no control over. I asked for a list of how many citations were written, nothing, I have nothing. So we don't, we trying to do our job, we trying, but again, we do not control the day-to-day operations.
Okay, we have been here since one o'clock. And I'm gonna ask that we take the agenda out of order and allow, um, Brad, every time that you come up, let's go to, um.
You gotta spin Robert's board first. I'll make most spots, suspend Robert's board.
I say, man. Okay, thank you, all right.
All the favor.
Since we voted to take the agenda out of order, when you get finished with whatever you were going to do, mayor, uh, may I give my report next, I, I have to leave to pick up, uh, my nephew from his job, he doesn't have a.
Okay.
Thank you.
So those, um, two, two items, and moderate, uh, request to take the agenda out of order, come on, Mr. Brown, on his end. Okay, he is, um. Go ahead, Mr. Brown, exactly.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council members for getting me on in here, uh, we're just talking about the resolutions for the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality and Action Taking to Maintain the Permits, this is for the permits, A and B, A is for the main plant, and B is for the West Pond, it's the super treatment facilities for the city. They, uh, is, to get the permit and keep it going, as we've, as we've always done, we do the ongoing point repairs, uh, like tax, point repairs, emergency repairs is needed, bi-monthly cleaning of lines and sections of the collection system, uh, serving facilities and sub-basins, uh, continued operation maintenance and upkeep and rehabilitation of pump stations, uh, like repairing and replacing pumps or motors, whatever's needed at, at each station or at the main plant, West Pond, North Pond, DG facilities. Uh, and the maintenance and stuff, and upkeep of like DG foods pre-treatment, uh, we're putting in new aerators as we speak. Uh, we had purchased in twenty fifteen or sixteen, some big aerators, and they, they were used at the time, and they, they've been a headache, and this, we were, we're replacing them because it's time, and the other ones are inefficient, so we're doing that, uh. Then we continue work with the engineers on rehabilitating the main, main plant, we've been talking with the mayor and the engineers about getting a grant for, uh, the rehabilitation of main plant, because the equipment's over twenty-seven years old. Uh, and it's, it's time for it to be up, upgraded and replaced as needed. Uh, we will continue to streamline econo, econ, economize operations of the plant equipment, meaning that we'll make efficient what we can while we can until it has to be replaced, which entails doing regular maintenance on it, keeping it up to date so it has less breakdowns, which we've got pretty good at, at everything going, because we're using a jobless uh, maintenance program to keep track, we do it preventatively instead of reactively. Uh, and we continue to train personnel, we cross-train them to work collections and treatment, right now, since I've been in there, uh, we have more state licensed employees than we've had in a long time, and we have two new hires that we're training them to get them certified with the state also. Uh, and the implementation of process control procedures at the facility, the, that's for the main plant, West Pond, it's all in one, you have two separate facilities for permits, because you have two separate outfalls, which means two different places after we treat it and get it back to where it's not gonna kill any wildlife and it's suitable, but it'll be released back out into the stream, is, is two different places, so it's two different permits.
Okay, um, but you have summarized A and B resolution, twenty-five eighty-zero eight-six, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality and Action Taking to Maintain Permit Requirements for Louisiana Water Discharge Permit System LWDPS, LA zero-zero-two-zero-four-four-three, main treatment plant, I will entertain.
I'm gonna give most.
Second.
Okay, I'll move in second, are there any questions?
Yes, I have one, please.
Mr. Brown.
Uh, this particular resolution should refer to twenty, twenty-eight-six, that's what we're referring to? I see three over here, and there's one that, all three of them same, or?
No, sir.
I know one said Main Street, and one said, where you main from and West from.
It's just A and B, the C is a resolution of, uh, that, that's not mine, it's, it's for the infrastructure, but it's, it's not mine.
He's doing A and B?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, oh, A and B, uh, C is not your, okay, that's what I'm trying to understand, I see him, yeah, okay, that was my question.
All right, all right.
All right.
Can you oppose, motion carries, okay, that brings us to B.
Thank y'all very much.
We, we didn't.
Oh, got the other.
I make a motion, I accept, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight-seven.
Second.
Okay, let me read it, resolution twenty-five twenty-eight-seven, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Enviro- Environmental Quality of Actions Taken to Maintain Permit Requirements for Louisiana Water Discharge Permit System LWDPS, LA zero-zero-two-zero-one-zero-nine, West Pond Treatment Plant.
I will log on my previous motion.
Second.
All the favor?
All right.
Interpose, motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We can go back, uh, we had all of these under, um.
Just did, I said she needed to.
Yeah, that's, thank you, come on, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much, mayor and council members, um, my name's Debbie Rogers, Christopher, Planning and Zone Commission. Uh, this meeting, we had three different special use requests, uh, the first special use permit was at seven oh five Colliers Lane. That was a, um, request to put in solar panels at the new mill location that was torn down. Uh, it's Sunbeam Solar LLC, um, they would be the same as the ones at three fifty Jefferson, which is behind the old mill. Um, ba- ba- behind the data center over at the old mill, it's supposed to take three years to complete the project, and, um, they would supposedly, after they finish, they're supposed to have ten full-time employees, so we approve that one.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm.
Yes.
Are you, are you, wait, let us.
With this one, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, uh, you say you gave a special permit?
Yes, sir.
You gave a special permit for a solar panel, um, no one on the board was contacted when you, when you issued a special permit?
Uh, you, are you referring to the city council?
Yes.
No, sir.
And why was that? I, I mean, I was in code enforcement, I kind of know how it goes, so I'm just asking a question, when you were calling somewhere when I asked you this?
Yeah, uh, uh, it's fine, I, I don't mind a question at all, uh, sir, in our, um, uh, book, we have things that are allowable by right, and then we have things that are allowable where the, um, commission can make, can issue a special use permit. Now, there are things that have to be approved by the city council, but there's some that we can just issue the special use permit. And this was one of them, according to the charter, it's in the book.
Okay, I want, I wanna see the book, because I was in code enforcement too, I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
And I think if you're gonna give a special permit to bring a company to Bastrop, I think it should come before the council.
Okay.
I mean, because we don't know what's coming into our city, it's just like an unelected board determining what's coming to the city of Bastrop, and we don't have, we, we have no, we have no knowledge of a solar panel company, or I, don't get me wrong, I want the company to come in, but when you have to switch and give a special permit, then that should be, I think, a city councilman's job, whether I'm on the council or not. I think when you start dealing with the charter, and you moving stuff around to fit a company, I think you need to, I think it would be more appropriate so that to be brought before the city council.
Ms. Debbie, I have a question, so.
Yes, I have, Mr. Green.
So the purpose of the special permit is because originally they wouldn't pass?
It's not that they wouldn't have passed, it's just that for that particular, um,
Project.
That particular zone in the city, it's, it's for mixed use, and so that's the reason we had to issue the special permit instead of it just being approved outright.
But it, so it, it wouldn't have been approved right out?
No, it couldn't have been approved by the, uh, code enforcement officer himself, there are some things that he can approve that we don't have to issue a special use permit for, so it couldn't have been approved by him just outright, it had to have the, uh, agreement of the board.
So, another question, both solar panel, uh, projects, what, what do they pay on behalf of the city, what do, what do the city benefit from them being?
Uh, added taxes, uh, right now, the, uh, the property is being assessed as open land, no improvements. Once the solar panels are being built, it's reassessed then as improved property. Therefore, the city gains more tax money than they would have if it's just left open and no panels were there.
All right, okay, let me finish, Mr. Jones, you, you remember that board you and I was talking about? You remember the board that I said to you, that, I mean, you talked about, you told me you was gonna take it back out because you put it back in?
Yeah, the board, the board that is in the code enforcement act, yes.
Hold on, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I, you, you remember what I'm, kind of what I'm talking about?
Yes.
What I'm saying is, you added another board, that's where I'm going here, these are unelected people that's making changes before, when it, when, like, what she said, you can't do it outright, I understand, I was in code enforcement, when you see it, when the dot's there, you can do it. But when you have to make some special accommodations, I don't think an unelected board should be making those type of decisions for the city of Bastrop, because we have constituents, and I gotta get with my constituents and see what they even wanna resound it for that, or would they wanna make an exception? So now I gotta go tell them about this, this solar panel deal over here, which is maybe a good thing, but would you feel kind of bad if, um, you got clients and they asking you, and you got constituents or whatever in your district, and they asking you about a job, and you have no knowledge of it? So that's why I asked you before, you remember I keep harping on, would you bring us everything that you prove and disapprove? Therefore, the council will know what's coming into the city of Bastrop, because if you just bring us something that you disapprove, we would have never knew what you approved, so I just would like for you to bring us everything, you know, it's just a copy, you know, what you prove and disapprove, so we'll have some kind of knowledge of what's businesses that's coming to Bastrop, because if I would have looked and seen that thing, and I know about code enforcement, I would say, hey, you know what, that probably need to come before the city council.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll get you, I, I think I have your phone number, but anyway, I can get, uh, I can copy the pages in the book for you. I can copy the chart and stuff and get that to you, it, it, would you like for me to do that?
Oh, I, 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 yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of how it goes, I'm, I'm saying about, I'm talking about the business that you approve.
Yes, sir.
And disapprove, because I asked you, I've been, the first, about two months I was on the council, I've been asking about, I've been asking about this, everybody up there know. I've been asking about the approved and disapproved, I've been asking, but I've never received one from you, I've just been just kind of patiently waiting.
Well, now, the agenda that we have on the meeting that we meet at, that if, if something is disapproved that's on this agenda, I could tell you about it. Now, if, if there's something that goes to the code enforcement officer, and it's not approved just because it's black and white in our, um, uh, zone ordinance, that this is in a certain area and it cannot be approved, we don't see that.
Okay, well, I, I got a better solution then, whatever you approve or disapprove, it's pretty simple, would you please provide, when you come, do your monthly report, provide a copy to the council.
Yes, sir.
And.
I'll just go by the.
And it goes to code enforcement also, when you approve a, a application for somebody with a business, just provide us with a copy, it's pretty simple.
I'll go by, I'll tell you what I'll do, before the next meeting, I'll just go by the code enforcement officer's office, and the ones that we don't see, I'll get a copy of those and present those as well.
Could, uh, could I ask a question about the two as well?
Yes, sir.
Because I have some great, great concern about what you're bringing, uh, because citizens, communities have been kind of question-based, we're being about it, solar panels was not the city, they were in the Bastrop. Uh, we have one that got passed right here to the east of the city hall right here, that got passed, but we know solar panel, nobody knew what was going on, and there they were. We look at, I think, before any, I don't know where you entered this project, bringing, I, I'm permitted with this something, this, uh, confident that gonna create ten jobs and kill all thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five hundred citizens, because we're right, coming right into this community. And we got a great deal of concern of that, I think that should, needs to be tackled until this council get the full. And we got a great deal of concern of that, I think that should, needs to be tabled until this council get to full detail. We shouldn't approve any committee, we have power with them, they are committed, they are uncommitted, like Mr. Green said earlier. They, they can't bring in industrial that's the city in on, especially inside the city limit, where it gonna affect the citizens of this city. Now, I don't think, that one over here got passed, well, it does is up and running out, out here. Uh, but before we go into the international site, the new site with, uh, the company out of Texas, I think they're out of Texas, if I recall right.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, they have to Texas, I spoke to them already.
Uh, Dallas, Texas, yes.
Yeah, yeah, they have to Texas, I spoke to them already, uh, because I got so many calls and concern about why a solar panel coming inside the city limit of Bastrop. Was the citizen named by the San African Americans, uh, now. I think before you go any further, if you have approved, you might disapprove, uh, you, the, the board people got their protest. Because that also great concern of the citizens in this community about those solar panels. That solar stuff coming over their head off in council, where it may be. I think it need to be tabled until we can get more detail and it's, and it can ensure the citizens that it's gonna be safe. You know, because we just, we did, we got the international department for one hundred years, okay, they found it, they'll thank God, God has a prayer. We're good on one hand and bad on the other, okay, we don't wanna create the same thing within this city limit. Where our children have to go to school and, and, and grow and, and, and produce. Uh, the solar panels can be dangerous, I, well, I think we probably the only city that I know, that I traveled quite a bit around the country. That I've ever seen a solar panel inside city limits. And I see them all, uh, raiding, I see them in crosses, I see them going these directions outside the city limit. Now, to bring them within the city limit, that, that's a, a help house to this community, and I think that need to be tabled. Or you gonna have people that are just demonstrating, they gonna make it worse than what it is, and we can get to the fact before we go and get them approval. To come inside our city to create ten jobs and kill all thirty five hundred people.
Now, I will say one thing.
I'm sure.
After our, uh, meeting, the, I, I'm not sure if it's the code enforcement, or his secretary, or Ms. Holmes, I don't know who sends out the letters.
Okay.
But at any rate, from that office, there's a letter sent out telling the people if they're approved or they're denied.
Well, well.
The only problem I see, and I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever y'all want me to do, but they may have already sent these people a letter. Saying that they're approved, so I don't know if there's any kind of legal action. Against the city if we now say, oh, wait, you're not approved.
Well, well.
Now, I guess Attorney Jones could tell us that.
If, if, well, if you have a question, we got Attorney Jones, we can deal with that, but I hope that Attorney Jones, or whoever they are, takes the citizen of this community under consideration.
Okay.
Because when you're talking about my grandchildren, I probably gonna live another ten, fifteen years, but my grandchildren will.
Yes, sir.
And their children go, go, gonna be with this, and I just don't think it's pr- appropriate to bring that inside the city limit. Unless we're insured by DEQ, whoever, uh, agency, or environmental agency, whoever, can insure the city, this is not gonna be a help app. Ten jobs not gonna hurt us one way or another, and for the land, whoever own the land, gonna pay the taxes.
Right.
And whoever, that, 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 from my understanding, they're buying, they're, they have a purchase, a option to purchase this land from Total One. They haven't been signed a seal of delivery yet, they making payment, they may forfeit on it, who knows, and then they make a few other obligations.
Okay.
But, right now, Total One is detached, well, taxed there because, I, I, I almost said it. Total One sold it to them for seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe wrong. And then they turn around and sold it back to Total One for six hundred thousand dollars. See, that, that, that's game play, we cannot afford to play games in the city of Bastrop.
I'll find out if.
And I know that by doing research.
I'll find out if that has been sent out, and I'll, I'll work on that before you, um.
They're not gonna turn this computer intelligent, no, no.
Uh, Mr. Green, both Mr. Greens and Mr. Brown.
Well, well, let, let's try to stop that and hold that until a better date till we get some clarity.
Yes, sir.
Not you, you just trying to move a project to somebody to try to push it, but don't push it in your own migrant children's year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, our next special use permit was, uh, location at three oh five North Washington Avenue. Uh, that is right beside Aaron's Furniture, um, it's a building, if you're facing Aaron's Furniture, it's a little building to the right. That's kind of connected on, uh, gentleman wanted to open a car lot and sell cars there, and that was approved.
What word is that?
Uh, if you're facing Aaron's Furniture.
North of Aaron's.
Uh, on North Washington. Uh, there's a little building to the right of that, a long time ago, it used to be a sporting goods, and at one place, it was a hair, uh, shop.
Car lot, that's true. I don't know if it was this board or code enforcement. Who's going up by the old church's chicken, past church chicken where the city garage is?
Yes, sir.
It's another garage.
Uh, that's, that was gonna be, uh, this is, that's on the, on this, this that I was going to tell you about.
Oh, okay, I, because that, that is in the hard corridor of our city, but keep going, I'll wait till you get there.
Alright. Okay, uh, the next special use permit was fifteen ten Elm Street Suite D. That's in the, um, I think it's called Robinson Williams, it used to be, uh, the school on Elm Street. Uh, there's a lady, uh, her name is Ms. Hawkins, and she wanted to be approved to put an adult daycare in there. Uh, she's talked to the owners of the building, uh, they're okay with it. Uh, it would be from seven thirty to three thirty every day, the person would pay forty dollars per day. She's providing transportation that will take them to and from their home, they'll have, uh, food provided. They, uh, breakfast and lunch will be provided there, um, they'll only have thirty five people at the most. And they'll have activities for the people during the day, uh, music, bingo, um, exercises. Different things for senior people to go to, rather than just having to sit at the house and have nothing to do, or. Maybe their family works, and they want someplace for them to go until they get off work and can take care of them for the rest of the day.
Um, do you know, and, and you may not know this, um, answer, will it be like cops or something for them to sleep if they get tired?
I don't know, uh, Ms. Moore, uh, I don't know about that because it's not going to be anything that's going to be overnight. It's strictly going to be during the day. So I can't answer you, the lady didn't tell us, and I guess I didn't think about asking her. Because it got off, you know, they left at three thirty, so I, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
There'd be more of a drop incident, you're saying, adult drop incident, is that what?
Yes.
That's what I, I heard.
Kind of like an adult daycare.
Yeah, yeah, drop incident with a duck drop instead of leaving the time and go.
It's, it's.
I guess that's what they call it.
The name of it is Hawkins Adult Daycare Healthcare. Uh, they'll have a, um, let me see, I wrote it down somewhere, um. They'll have, um, a nurse practitioner on call in case someone gets hurt or has a heart attack or whatever. Uh, and they'll have a, um. A CNA there on the site, in case they need some kind of little special, uh, medical, uh, advice or something while they're there.
Roger, they need to be approved by, uh, uh, the Department of Health or?
Yes, she's already got all of her, yes, she's already got all of her, uh.
State license.
Uh, uh, certificates and everything that she needs from the state, yes, sir, she already had that. Okay. Okay, our next, uh, and those were the special use permits. Go into the items that were approved by right, Drama Queen's Dance Company, that's at six fifty one East Madison Avenue. And that's just a dance studio, they go in and teach the children dancing. Brother to Brother Automotive, fifteen oh three South Washington, they're just changing owners. That is the, um, automotive center that's on the corner of, uh, South Washington and Collinston Road, right there on the corner. It's not changing the type of business, just the owners. Uh, the next item that was approved was Zavion Z. Mitchell Signature Services, two one zero seven Cooper Lake Road. Now, that's his address, and that's where he's housing his business, however, people won't be going to his house. And it's called a crowning service, if someone passes away. They go and they have, uh, a crown, like a physical crown, that they put, uh, at the cemetery, on the casket. And then they offer music as well. And so you just call the person and tell them what you wanna do, and then he goes out, so nobody will be at his home. The next item was Steve's Mobile Mechanic Service, three oh two West Madison, uh, they're moving from Van Frank. And that's the one, Mr. Green, that was at the city garage.
Okay, okay, well, stop right there. Um.
Beside the city garage.
Alright, we got a code enforcement problem already. We trying to track businesses to the city of Bastrop. And I think when you dealing with our corridors, especially historical district, we got a big, most stringent on the type of businesses. That's gonna cause for the city council to go back and revisit, revisit the codes that we, that we got, because. Um, I, I don't know how long it's been in business. They starting off on the wrong foot. Because you rode the ride through there, I thought it's the city, I said, we, we, I know the city. Ain't moved them many bad cars, we don't got them in the bad cars, and because it's close, it's right at our garage, it's kind of tied to our garage. And it looks like it's a city problem, look like it's belongs to the city, but it belongs to a private person, well. I mean, you are, you have already given the, uh, permit, they are, it's already been approved, they are in operations because I said, over there. Well. Who, who you saying, who's the owner of it?
Um. Steve's Mobile Mechanic Service, and let me see if I can see the gentleman's, uh, the, the gentleman's individual name is not on here, so I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, I'm.
This was approved by right and not necessarily by us.
Code enforcement. Okay, code enforcement's back there, what I'm saying, I wanna know the owner, because we, we gotta make sure that the owner know that this gotta be a. It's gotta be, the area's gotta be clean, you just can't, just, it's not a junkyard, we, we, we approve it for what, what is it approved for?
Uh, a mobile mechanic.
Mobile mechanic means you go out.
Well, he's going to work on the cars there at that shop.
That, that's not a mobile, I mean, that's a specific fixture, he's got on there, he's a mobile mechanic, mobile means you go out to places. So that's a deception, if you gonna have mobile mechanic on there, you gotta go out, you, you turning that into a car shop uptown, but you, the application says mobile. Just like in the big cities, when you call the mobile mechanic, he come to your house, just like I called the mobile mechanic, he come to my house, I don't take my car to him. That's where he's the mobile, because he drive and fix your car wherever it is. So I, I think we, since you approved it, I think the council need to really, we need to reconsider that one. Uh, let Mr. Code Enforcement go by there, and, and if he's gonna have a business up there, make sure that it's gonna be a positive influence on the community. And not a hassle, because you just stated yourself as a mobile, so it's, it's on the false pretense. If you got the, uh, license saying you're a mobile, but you actually having people bring their vehicles to you. And leaving them overnight. Okay, yes, ma'am, I'm just, I'm just stating.
Okay, next one is, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce this name, it's a Spanish name, but it's a food truck, um. I would mess it up if I tried, but it's a, a food truck, uh, it's a Mexican food, and, um, they'll be located in the city. Wherever the business gives them the right to be, they have to get approval from the business, for instance, Smith Furniture, or, um. You know, wherever they might go. Next one is Morehouse Community Medical Center, five oh one Durham Street. Uh, you know, they built the new building where the old movie theater was, well, they're opening their old building again. So they'll be located in both locations. The next item was K and T Jiffy Tax, six forty seven East Madison. And that's just a person who's going to be open just to do income taxes during income tax season, um. And that's all I have.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
Yes, sir.
Back to your solar panel project, I'd like to make a motion that the city of Bastrop, well, I said that, I, I'd like to make a motion. That the city of Bastrop, uh, halt, halt that particular project until further notice from the. Resoning Committee, bring, bring that before the city, city, before the city government, before the, before the, that you put on the genuine broad before, before.
Mr. Jones, do what he can on that.
So, that goes through your board, and?
I did, I, go ahead, I'm sorry, we can get a motion on to halt it, I, we've discussed it, but you know, I wanna, I wanna make it clear on the record, what I, I meant when I said about the future of Bastrop. Uh, we'd like to put a motion to halt that, to take the permit, whatever they got in process, whatever going on, that it be halt to come before the city council of Bastrop. We, we need to know the city government, we, 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 we need to let our people know that we are, we know what's coming into the city of Bastrop, especially something that could cause that type of damage to the city. Don't solar panel.
Turn it down.
Sunbeam, Sunbeam LLC.
I think. If, if, what, what, if I caused one, this might.
That D D district, that's my. That's your district, I'm sorry.
I, I think that, um. I think that I, I made a suggestion earlier, so we won't have this problem, if it's gonna be a special permit. Need to kind of network with the council before we go approve it, now we got a problem because y'all already approved it. Now it's gonna be hard to go tell somebody that they spent money, that you gotta stop. You know, we probably didn't, if we would have polled our people, they probably would have told us right off the bat, we got, whether we would have turned it down. But since it's already been approved, I think, I'm gonna let the attorney win on, on this situation, but I, I, what, what do you think, Attorney Jones?
Your planning and zoning commissions are authorized by ordinance and law, state law, to make certain decisions. And those decisions are final. My question is, was that made to you, because y'all have a board of adjustments, basically?
Yes, sir.
Was that made, was that made by the Board of Appeals or Adjustments?
Yes, sir.
It was just made in the.
Planning and zoning commission, yes, sir.
Okay.
See, that's one of those boards I was talking about that you had, I'm gonna go back and find it, I promise you I'm gonna find it. This the type of stuff, this the type of thing that I feared was gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, so, you would have to, you would have to take an appeal to the Board of Appeals. And so it's forty, it's thirty three one forty dot two nine, you, any appeals to the board, maybe taken by a person agreed or any officer, department, board, or bureau. And municipality affected by the grant or refusal of a building permit or other active decision, building inspector, permit and zoning clerk. So you can appeal it to the Board of Appeals, if thing goes to their board of appeals.
What was that section again, thirty three?
It's, it's thirty three colon one forty point two nine.
It's even with being turned down, I'm gonna read it though.
Well, that's grants or refusals, so. Well, that's grants or refusals, so it can be either granted or refused, it was granted, so then you, you can appeal the grant. But it goes back to their Board of Appeals.
Who has to file an appeal to the, was it to the code board, that's valid, or the city government?
So the planning and zoning, there's, there's two levels that come over, there's a planning and zoning commission, and there's the Board of Appeals. Uh, the Board of Appeals is often comprised of, sometimes it's the same members as the planning and zoning, and sometimes it's other members. The Board of Appeals acts as the bottom of the report, other than coming to the council, if you have a Board of Appeals, it doesn't come to the council, then it goes to the district court after that.
So it comes to the council first?
No, it does never come to the council, if you have a Board of Appeals, then it goes to the district court.
Okay, does. District court, okay.
So, any member of.
Hold on, hold on, Attorney Jones, uh, you telling me that when it go to the Board of Appeals, it don't come to the city council? Uh, uh, did you, did you just say it go to the Board of Appeals, don't come to the city council?
So they, y'all have a Board of Appeals, correct?
Yes.
Yes, they have a Board of Appeals. So that's where it goes. As to the step after that, give me some, give me some time.
Okay.
Because there's, there's two ways it goes. Your Board of Appeals acts as, as your appellate body, so any agreed member of the public body who's an officer can appeal that decision.
The council can appeal it.
Uh, councilmen would have an appellate.
The councilmen, councilmen.
Or councilperson, sorry. Uh, the council would have an appellate right to send it to the Board of Appeals, which then the Board of Appeals would. And from there, the decision would go.
Well, would be proper to make appeal, for this council to make a motion to make, as they say, we want to appeal this from the council party, would it proper for us to make an appeal? I mean, make a motion to appeal, have this particular ruling appeal, would be proper for the council to vote on appeal, that it be, appeal be taken in this matter? At this time, uh, I guess I had to ask a question before I get that for, uh, the day this particular, what day would this approve? What the date they will approve?
Uh, let me see, our meeting, uh, was, I think it was just, our meeting was the twenty-seventh, January the twenty-seventh, it's normally the third Monday of each month, but we, we postponed it till the twenty-seventh because of Martin Luther King Day, which was a holiday for everyone.
January twenty-seventh this year.
So January the twenty-seventh.
Okay, what day did the letter was, was sent out to approve, was sent out to everybody, do you have a copy, do you have a copy of that letter when you sent for approval? That you, that it came before the twenty-seventh, uh, January, do you have a copy of the letter, sent, sent to the sun belt, saying they have been approved?
I don't, Mister Bradford, because, uh, the committee doesn't send that out, it's the office of the code enforcement officer.
Well, have code enforcement, code enforcement, who would that be?
Mister McDuffie, yes, sir, Mister McDuffie.
Mister McDuffie, Mister McDuffie, have you sent that out yet?
Wait just a minute.
I gotta.
I'm sorry, hey.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what did you send that out?
Wait, 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 or, this is having dialogue from the audience.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Bring what's in the document.
Where are, where are the time delays for this, for this appeal process?
Generally spelled out in your ordinances, what does your ordinance say there for time delays on people?
I don't have that with me, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Well, when I looked at, when I looked at it, it says, you got the right to appeal, then it goes to the other court. The city council always had the final say so, when I was in code enforcement, and I read the book pretty thoroughly, unless something to change, because I'm, I'm perplexed, why would the city council go back to an unelected board for some approval? That don't make a bit of sense.
So generally speaking, how your planning and zoning commissions work is if you don't have a Board of Appeals and they issue a final report, the final report comes to the city council for them to either adopt that final report and then do what's in it or not adopt what's in it.
Oh, that's what I was getting at, I was just, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was saying, okay. I mean, because I ain't, it's in my district, I don't really have a problem, but I don't want this to set a precedent where a board would have the final say so when we elected officials and we represent our district.
So when you have a Board of Appeals, it short circuits some of that function. Because that's why they put it in there, you have the option to do it, you don't have to do it, it's a place that's optional to do it. When you have a Board of Appeals, that's what acts as your appellate function, rather than having the council act as your appellate function.
Well, if you, if that's the case, I'll be contacting you, so you can work on something, because I don't think nobody in the city of Basta would go for an unelected person dictate what comes to the city of Basta. And based on my analysis, and I worked up there with Mister McDuffie, we studied this pretty thoroughly. And we have been through this with Mister, the other code enforcement man, Mister Pierre. And when we came up into his deal, so I'm glad we having this discussion, some good comes out of everything. Because now, you gonna force us to research the law, because I don't think that an unelected board should have never had a final say so of what comes into the city of Basta. Now, I can make think it was a good idea, because Mister Bradford, just one vote, I'm just one vote. And it comes to the council, if it's voted, because I want jobs in the city, you know, I haven't did a study like he say he did, a comprehensive study. It's not, I'm not saying I'm part against it, I'm just talking about the process. We don't wanna short circuit the process, because think about what you just said, because if somebody turned down, this here was in reverse. If you turn somebody down, then they go to the Board of Appeals and they turn them down, that's, that's not final.
Well, the process there, we ha, not this year, in the past, we have denied someone. Uh, they appealed it, they go to the Board of Adjustments, the Board of Adjustments denied it. Their next set, uh, their, their next, uh, appeal is to the city council.
That's right.
So, if the Board of Adjustments denies it, then the city council sees it. But if we approve something like that, which it states in our code book, that we have the right to approve that according to what was adopted, uh, when the, uh, code, uh, uh, was adopted. All heavy industrial, all light industrial, all research and development. It's in here that the, uh, uh,
Is it a?
Code, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission has the right to approve those by a special permit. Now, there are some things in certain areas, uh, and our book says that the city council has to approve that. However, the solar panels was not one of them, according to our code that's written now. And that's why it never went to the city council, because it was approved and according to what our book says.
There are some certain things that planning and zoning commissions by ordinance are authorized to approve. Your Board of Adjustments, is that the same members of the Planning and Zoning?
No, it's not.
Okay, it's a different membership.
They're, they've always been different since I have done it.
Correct.
Just so it wouldn't be the same person that denied it one time and that are denied it a second time.
I believe the delay on that is generally ten days to appeal.
The problem we have here is, is, is never, you really never gonna run into this problem.
Yeah.
Because most of the time when they approve something, it's for good cause, I mean, the problem when you disapprove something, I'm just trying to get some understanding for when it's a controversy, when they approve something and the city council really don't want it in a district.
Well, that, so that, where that runs to is, is that all your councilmen, all of your planning and zoning, your board of, your, all your members are appointed by the city council.
Right.
And that's where your, your caution in who you approve, who you appoint, who you don't appoint. There are certain things that are vested with planning and zoning commissions, they can make final decisions on, plans, plans, stuff like that. But generally, you have ten days to appeal the planning and zoning to Board of Adjustments, and another ten from there to appeal to the council.
Come this night, now we come before they please.
Okay, I think.
I wanna, I wanna get in there, we just had it, go ahead, uh, Mister Locke.
I, I think I was on the board when we approved those boards. And was the intent, if there was a controversy about denial of a permit, then it would have to come before the board.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I think I was on the board when, and that was the intent, someone was denied, uh, the, uh, the approval. Because I think you're right, we made appointment to the board and we left it in that board's hand, because we approved the board members. And the question was, it looked awful funny for us to have people on the board and then just got them in the face by not approving what they done. That was the intent on denying.
Sorry. Hey, I have a question too, Mister.
Now, that was what we did years ago.
In two thousand four.
Thank you.
Two thousand.
And that was the golden thing back then, was is that they were making these boards, because they were tired of being clogged with the things. And also it allowed you to put people there who weren't elected, but had more specialized knowledge of the regulations and the building restrictions and things like that. And it allowed an appellate function, uh, to feel like they got it, that's why the Board of Adjustments was there to keep all appeals from the initial assessment.
Is there, is, is, is the solar company aware of premier process including time for possible appeals?
I doubt it.
Hey, I got one other question.
I don't think so, Mister Green, because they wouldn't have need of knowing that, because they were approved.
And, I got a real important question about what they just changed up on.
Do it, please, do it.
Okay, you just said, Mister Locke, who you said appointed the board?
See, we appointed board members and we voted on the board members, and I think we do that periodically, the mayor make.
Okay, well, they, they, I'm, 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 I know where you're going, but I'm finna show you, when we changed over, that's when we got paid close attention, that's what I was gonna bring to the council, I left my paper at home. But when we redid, when we revised the code enforcement deal, remember I was telling you, councilman, gentleman, Attorney Jones, that we, I kept asking you, are we just dealing with code enforcement, that's the only section of the code? Well, trust will verify, I really believe that until I started looking for something, I started looking for that board. And then I found something very, very curious, because I was in code enforcement, so I got photocopies of how the laws work versus when they changed them. Mister Locke made a very, very good point. When you changed it, it says before that the city council appointed the board. But mysteriously, when you rewrote the law, this is what it states now.
In two thousand and four, it said the mayor appointed.
No, I got it on my, I got it on my phone right here, I, I mean, I got the code enforcement photocopy of my book.
Well, if you wanna pull the ordinance, I can give you the ordinance number.
I, I'm not looking for no order, I'm looking for what's in the book.
Well, if you wanna say what happened in two thousand and four, it's two thousand four dash four zero one seven, it says the Planning and Zoning Commission shall consist of seven members, all appointed by the mayor.
That's something, I'm trying to get to it right, let me get my glasses. And you kinda know what I'm talking about, because you went right to it.
Well, there's, there's only three ordinances on books about the planning and zoning. It's chapter sixteen. And nothing in the code enforcement reform act touch chapter sixteen.
Okay, this is the one before, prior to we changed, I got the date on it, this is what it said.
What, what ordinance, what section?
It said section sixteen, one point two. And it says this, in the book, it says, planning commission, planning commission shall be, shall also serve zoning commission and is, jumping around, and it's established it will be consistent, it will consist of seven members, and they will be appointed by the city council, period.
Well, you should pull that ordinance from two thousand and four.
I'm not, you, I'm talking about what's in the zoning book, Mister McDuffie, can you go get your zone, planning and zoning book?
The zoning book's not the law, the law is the ordinance on the books.
Well, if it, well, what I'm saying is, you can't change it, because it's in the book. It's in, it's in the blue book, so I'm looking at it in the blue book. I mean, you can't tell me what I don't see in the book, it's in the book, but then all of a sudden, when we changed the law, it says the mayor.
Show me in the code enforcement act where we changed that.
I didn't write this up.
I didn't do that, that's.
No, I'm, I'm finna show you.
I don't have, that's not my.
This, this comes from, uh, this is, this is the code enforcement book, I'm telling you.
I didn't do that.
Okay.
But this is the code enforcement.
Let's maintain decorum.
We got decorum, we just having a lively debate, we not, I'm, I'm just showing them what I got.
I didn't do that, that's not.
I, I didn't say you did that, I say it's in the code enforcement book, but the book lying?
No, look, here's your.
So, so, if the book's different from the ordinance, then what?
You gotta go to the ordinance, so if you wanna pull oh four forty one seven.
So you mean tell me it was a mis, it, they, they miscalculated this in the, in the, in the, uh, book we've been going about all this time?
I'm not the one who produced the book, I'm the one who's telling you what, what.
So, so, so the zoning is.
Oh, four dash forty one seven.
So, so then, so, so the zoning is, is operating off, off a book, is, is not in compliance with the ordinance?
I've never seen that blue book.
Mister Locke just said that the, the council appointed him, so you been wrong too, Mister Locke?
Uh, may I add something, please? Uh, when we get, like, if someone passes away or they decide they don't wanna do it anymore, um, the mayor recommends a person, uh, for instance, the last person that was recommended was Miss Angela Gladney, uh, she works at, uh, Bron Bush State Farm, and she was the last one that was, uh, recommended. And what happens, the mayor, uh, recommends this person and the city council voted on her for a final approval.
That's what I just said, that's what's in the book.
So, the, the mayor recommend, now, when it first started, that was different. But now, the mayor recommends the person and then they're brought before the city council, and Miss Gladney was the last person that was approved by the council.
So, so David, being that, that, that ordinance you just stated, we need to have that changed, well?
We need to pull the ordinance, all the ordinances, but the, the one that is today. Says oh four forty one seven reads, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall consist of seven members, all appointed by the mayor who may be, who may remove any member of the commission after public hearing for insubstantial conduct or malfeasance.
And you pull that up for when?
That is valid, it's valid right now, it's current.
So when, when did, when was it written?
It was wrote in, it's passed in February the twelfth of two thousand four, so actually it's passed eleven, twenty-one years today.
So how did, how did it change from the mayor to the city council?
I don't know if that's a printing error, somebody who printed it.
It, it, it's not a print error.
A print error in the book?
It's not a print error.
I didn't print the book, but I'm, I'm asking, a print error in the?
Well, I, we just saw all this, so, how, how long y'all, this is, how long you been operating out of that book?
Uh, I've been since two thousand ten.
I, 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 I.
How long, how long you been on council?
Sixteen.
And so when you say that there was, that, that one is written?
February the twelfth of two thousand four.
Now, there have been amendments that have been made and we've added them into our packets.
In the book?
Yes.
So it seems to me that the book's different than the ordinance?
I'm, I'm sorry, I know that.
We're gonna have to pull both of them, see where the, where they're coming.
Well, I'm just gonna base off what you just read, and what he just read off the book, it's two different things.
Dude, correct, so we're gonna have to see where the discrepancy.
Yeah, we gonna have to get that changed. And the mayor was, she was on the city council. The mayor was, uh, a mayor, back then, they've been operating as the council, but all of a sudden, it mysteriously appears the mayor, when I look through here, I see the book, because I'm looking at my photocopies, then I go to the computer and I see the book, then I see, well, we made some changes, and all of a sudden, it's, it omitted the city council and put the word mayor in there.
Well, all I know is, is it's the first time I've dealt with the membership of this in anything, it's not dealt with in the code form, it's two thousand and four, and when you got a blue book, none of which.
But what makes you go back two thousand and four and see that?
It's on Unicode, if you.
I mean, I mean, but what, what triggered you to go and look?
Okay, so when you pass ordinances and they go on Unicode?
But we wasn't dealing with that, we just said we was dealing specifically with some house.
I was looking at the composition of the Board of Adjustments, so I was trying to see where the members were, to see if you had your Board of Adjustments. So I went to your ordinances online, and like any law, they put down at the bottom, the instrument and the data was passed. I didn't go dig through it, it's printed for you online.
So it's, what, what we need to do to put in place to, so we can change?
We just have to see where the discrepancy are, why that book says that versus why the, the official reporter of the law says differently.
Mister McDuffie, can you go get your code enforcement book, please?
Please.
Please.
Uh, no.
I've been right.
No, no. You're not gonna disrupt the meeting, but you gotta.
You have to pull the ordinances to see where it is because this is, the official reporter showing this is the ordinance.
Let me, let me make a suggestion and I'll be glad to do whatever you wish.
Okay.
Uh, I'll look this code up and try to print it out. I'm not sure how long it is, but I'll try to print it out. I'll compare it with the book, see what the discrepancies are and then I can get with Attorney Jones and maybe we can go from there. Would that be acceptable with you?
You all, I'm I'm trying to explain this.
Okay.
You all are talking about procedures. That's all good and damn. I don't have no problem with you getting the procedure together. I'm trying to deal with the fact that this letter was sent out by Mr. Mike Duffy and I need to know the date. It was, okay, you're saying January was passed. January twenty seventh.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mister Mike Duffy replied, I'm sorry for asking out of order, Mister Mike Duffy. Mister Mike Duffy replied that he has sent the letter out. Is that, now he right, Mister Mike Duffy? Will you come up? Can you come over here for a minute? I don't, you said I just.
Put him open spot.
I'm not putting him over the spot.
No.
Well, well, see, we got it.
No.
Okay, well, Mister Mike Duffy, stay back there. Mister Mike Duffy. Do you have a copy of that letter that you sent to Sunbill LLC? The reason I ask, because I wanna know if, I wanna see a copy of the letter. I wanna know if we still in the, in, 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 in the term that we can appeal, you know, we still have a appeal procedure. Day, I heard somebody say ten day, eleven day. I wanna know what it, that letter was sent to Sunbill LLC. If we still in our appeal procedure, then we have a right to appeal. It's a matter of term. Now, if we outside our appeal procedure, we still have a right to appeal because the attorney tell you that certain thing has delay appeal.
Well, you gotta, the, the appeal deadlines are going on from the day after the decision.
Well, 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 uh, that that's all good and damn. I wanna see what the date of the letter. What they, gee, he sent, that Mr. Mr. uh, Roger don't have shit in Mr.
The decision is, the decision date is what controls, not the law.
Okay, okay, I understand the date. What date was it sent out? Anybody else said yet? Anybody should, Mister Mike Duffy, I'm somebody know that.
What's, what's the date of the council?
What was the date this letter was sent out to Sunbill LLC? I need to know the date it was sent to. If we still in our appeal frame, if he sent it out two weeks afterwards or something, uh, if he, if he did it in a timed amount, excuse me, if he did it in a timed amount. Then we have to request what you call a delay appeal. You know, I will appeal anything, but if you call it attorney, the day appeal, you can read, you can read that, I know you are. But delay appeal, but we gotta stop it because the community, I can tell you, Robert, back from my calls and phone calls and talking and surveying the community, they don't agree. And it's creating, we need to kill this right here.
I think.
Nip it in the bud right now.
If I could offer something to you about solar stuff, dealt with this. You need to probably pass a solar farm ordinance that actually regulates solar farms.
Okay.
We had to do this in another jurisdiction that would mandate what the requirements are, they look like, so you're not going through the special permit process.
I'm, I'm saying, and that's.
And that way, that way you can.
Yeah, we can limit what comes in.
Because I've heard this before already.
Okay, sure, please.
The problem is, is that we don't have a zoning ordinance on par for, that regulates solar farms and what they have to look like so the community knows what they're gonna look like and where they're gonna be, where they're at. So legally, you, you need to pass a solar farm ordinance.
Right, that's why we didn't have one.
You don't have one, so that's why we just.
That that nobody decides to limit. You don't have to.
That's why we.
You wanna understand? And we need to stop it now.
And so you can regulate it through that.
We need to stop it now.
To make sure that if it does go to planning and zoning, it conforms with the way in which the council and the government has decided what should.
Right, we know, we never thought, not in my day, in time, to anybody would approve a solar farm inside the city limit. But they must know nothing about solar themselves. The zoning board need to be educated well, okay? And the company's taking advantage of this community bringing it here.
I guess, I guess the question.
That's what I feel about it. That's what a lot of the community feel about it.
There, I guess the question at hand is, is, is trying to see what's the process on at this point of after the letter being sent that they was approved.
So that's, that's. You gotta find out what the, what the appeal delays are in their ordinance.
So how, is it possible that you can get on it as of just today?
Yeah, I can get on it as soon as we get out, as soon as we get out of here and I'm clearly doing it through here right now. To try and figure out, and the delays go from the day after the decision.
And also in the meantime, can we update, can we update the ordinance to, to reflect what the blue book says for the city council?
Yeah, we'll get together and see what the, I've never seen a blue book. I, I didn't know they run around with a blue book, book. I, I look, I look at the actual book. Which is the one that is our official registered ordinance, not something somebody printed.
No, by having the city council do that, that gives us our input going forward, so.
Yeah, we can move with that and we can move with solar farm thing to look at ordinances to regulate stuff like that so we can have uniformed plans.
Captain Jones, you just stated something that you go by the, the book and not something that's printed. I got this out of the code enforcement book. This ain't, I didn't find this on internet anywhere. Remember I was in code enforcement. I told you, this comes from the book that's right down there. And the book that's in code enforcement. So our, to, to resolve a problem, so it's not like that. We arguing or fussing on mute point. The code enforcement officer's sitting right there. It's pretty simple. Walk, you get the book, flip it over and you will see it.
So you, so you. That book's not your official register.
Well, you just said you can go by a book.
But so you, so you. It's not your official register.
But you, but you just said, I, I'm gonna go by the book. The blue book is, I'm going by the blue book. You said, you just said you was going by the blue book. I'm going by the blue book.
I'm not going by the blue book. I know by your official law of your ordinances is kept by your clerk of court.
Here's the conflict though, David. Here's the conflict because you, you're, you're reading off a, a, a ordinance. The conflict is, Mr. Butler is operating off the same books.
That's correct.
So.
It's like, it's like saying that you had two copies of the same thing, but one of them, obviously, there's something in between. So you go to the official journal of ordinances, which is where I'm at.
Mr. Butler can throw that book away then.
Yeah, because it's a conflict. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of like pointing us to go by the book.
Yeah, it's, it's why whenever you make things, you wanna make sure that whenever you make copies or you excerpts of laws, that you actually copy them correctly and type them in there.
They've been mistyped for, uh, thirty years.
It's all been at least thirteen years.
Yeah, we, 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 it, it's well in.
That's why you have to check the blue book against the official register.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm brainstorming here because you on, you got me on something else. And actually earlier about changing the code, you said you having to look when you was looking for another zone, another board. That would draw you to it because you can go to the line online, because I used to look at it when I was in Houston, go online and it never said. It never said the mayor. I'm talking about it never, ever said the mayor. You can go back, anybody's gotta go online, go back, type in five years from now. I mean, back five years, you gonna see, it's gonna consistently say the, the board, the, the city council. But now when I, when you go online and you see it, so it had to change, what I'm saying? Now it's saying the mayor. You go put it up online now, it's gonna say the mayor. But if you go back and look five years ago, it's gonna say the council. So somebody changed it. Something changed.
Well, what you can do is you can pull the two thousand and four ordinance because there's a piece of paper that reflects that online. Let's see what it says. And that's what I'm telling you that we need to do.
Yeah, because.
But this the online only reflects what the paper is.
Well, well, I'm actually a question. When you found out the discrepancy, did the code, was code enforcement notice? Because he the one, he the one provide code enforcement. So if it's a error, uh, why would we still be operating on a blue book that's readily available? That he goes by, not me. He goes by that blue book. So what, what, what do the?
I had no idea that.
What do the, what do the charter states, David? What do the charter states in it?
The charter is silent as you planning and zoning. What you need to pull is the two thousand and four.
Hello, 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 hello. Because I'm going somewhere there too. So we need to, we need to change the charter as well to reflect these, these changes as well.
Charter is, charter is like your constitution. When you wanna change a law, you don't have to go change the constitution. You have the authority to do it. Ordinance is.
Yeah, hello, 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 David.
Does the law submit addresses?
Law, there is general overall planning and zoning laws that do trump any charter or ordinance, but the general provisions of ours conform with the general law.
What's the, so what's the process of chang- um, changing the charter?
Change the charter, you'd have to, you'd have to make a petition to the governor. You would have to then notify the attorney general to say that it's not in, it's not inconsistent. It's not inconsistent with any provision of the Louisiana constitution or general laws or the federal constitution. They issue a declaration to the governor stating they've reviewed it and it's not that way. The governor then issues a proclamation to the city of Bastrop that if anybody is going to object, if, I think it is, there's a percentage, I believe it's thirty percent. Yeah, object, then by, to the petition, then you have to go to an election.
Well, see, he's saying about the charter. That was not official in the charter. This was amended. So we can change the amendment. This was put in with zoning. When they, when they made zoning.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's, that's, that was a mute point. What I'm saying is, you don't have to go through all that change in the charter. You can just change the, you can just change the ordinance. Because it was in, it was implemented. So we can change the ordinance to go back to where we thought it was originally. So we need to draw the ordinance. To change it back to what we thought it was, which was the council. That's the simplest thing.
We need to, we need to go search down the oh four ordinance and see if it's reflected properly and what it says. And once we pull that, we'll have an answer. And then we can say, is the blue book reflecting correctly or is the, or is the thing?
The reason I asked about changing the charter because we have passed an ordinance, for example, the five thousand dollars and it's, and things have happened where it did come before us and nothing took place. So I was trying to see what we need to do to make it more concrete.
So to make it more concrete, if you wanna change the charter to, uh.
Not just, not just this particular thing. I was just asking the process of.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so you, you.
Because, because apparently we did a, a ordinance for the, the mayor can't spend over five thousand dollars and have it several times. And nothing, and I asked you, can something be done? You said, nothing can be done. So I, I was saying, I was just wanting to know going forward, what would it take to change the charter?
So you have to issue.
You told me that. I guess I'm saying that was my reason.
Yeah, so and you can do something.
For my council to understand.
You can do something about that. I mean, you can make a referral that somebody has created malfeasance in the office and then it goes to the attorney general. I can't sue the mayor. I'm, I'm the city attorney.
Well, if you, well, well, yeah. I, I think the previous motion, man.
Well, I think, uh, Attorney is trying to clarify something. Mr. Locke, you gave some historical information on the, uh, origin. The zoning, I think it took place over the study in a number of years, two thousand and four, that was under the Hawkins administration. And the day, uh, when it started and then the first board started in two thousand and nine under the Hawkins administration. Uh, Attorney Jones, if you will research that information and let's move on.
Miss Charisse, I remember when I was in code enforcement, they redid the book like in two thousand and sixteen. I mean, when I was in code enforcement, I was talking to Miss Charisse, we was researching something and she says that the, it was updated in two thousand and sixteen because. I'm, am I?
I think that was when we added an amendment. I don't remember what the amendment was, but there was an amendment to it. And it was, uh, we were given that and we added it into our book and took out the page that had to do with that amendment.
What book do you get your stuff? Out of the blue book? Your information out of that?
Well, I'm, I don't remember what color the book was and I apologize. I, I don't mean that negative. Uh, when my house flooded in two thousand and sixteen, uh, I lost my book. I lost the whole thing. So I don't remember what color it was and I.
But you do get it out of the book, the hard book.
What I did, I went on the website and I printed one. I printed it off of the website. So now mine's not colored and back from two thousand and sixteen, I don't remember what color it was. And I, I, I wouldn't be a negative when I said that. I promise.
It was blue because I had.
Okay, that's fine.
David, just for clarity.
Yes, sir.
But not for you, David, just for clarity. The, the charter trumps resolutions and ordinance, right?
Charter is your constitution, so it's gonna.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Locke.
Yes, yes, lady.
That brings us, uh. I don't think we've ever done enough.
I think we've all announced something this way. I think we're good.
I think we will let Mr. Mr. D. Green announce about here parade and faces range.
Oh, yeah, um, Black History Parade is Saturday at two thirty. It's coming from, it's starting at Rassell High School in the weekend at Dawson Park. Uh, we just planned about here right now, so we, we, if we have to postpone it, we'll make an announcement via Facebook, via phone calls, via telephone. But if you wanna get into the Black History Parade, you can contact me, three one eight, seven eight nine, six six nine four. You can contact Sonny. Let me get the number.
Is this your, anyway, you give it?
Yeah.
It's on the phone.
Okay.
Her number is three one eight, two eight two, zero eight four eight, and I will run you an application as well.
Okay, all right. Whatever, I'm just, I had, I can hold. The lead that puts us at number five, accept previous minutes, special meeting, January fourteen, twenty twenty five. Yes, sir. Accept previous minutes, special meeting, January fourteen, twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion that we set.
Top of the moon by Mrs. Tack. Second. Second by Mr. Jay Green. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. I, I, I want to say something about this. I'm sorry, I'm moving so slow. I got tired out here. But I like to see that the motion be accepted with the necessary directions. I said, I want to go into the night with the motion can be, I mean, the minutes can be accepted with the necessary corrections.
Okay, what corrections?
Several, several of me here that I like to speak on that this time, like sometimes burn out at home. And then two hours, three hours, we can give them, give them, give them best of, you know how it is. Yeah, 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 and I'm home and, uh. What you saying?
For the record, who was that attorney?
Come here. One of you the AARP money, uh, it's, we're taking that, they put, it says something about twenty five dollars, twenty five twenty five dollars. Grant for representative friends to tell me, is that the one we're talking about? If that's to do with the, I, I thought that was something different. That's the, okay. You know, they, you know, the reason, that's why I'm saying with the AARP, that it starts with. Okay, have nothing to do. But I like to make note that it didn't be accepted with the necessary correction that, that the twenty five thousand dollars was talked about, grant to be accepted.
Thank you, Senator. How would you like for it to be, um, stated?
They did, not part of the AARP money. I'm not much of a given.
This is home to make a level.
Yeah, we, we, we want to make corrections.
You and.
Both of us can, right? It's two ordinances.
There, there's actually two ordinances on zoning. They've, they've, they've never, they've never overruled the oh four one, the oh four one. And there's a, there's a six, there's a sixteen.
I told you to redo sixteen.
They created a separate book called zoning, which goes one through sixteen. And then there's a planning commission that is in the code of ordinances in section sixteen that's in the code of ordinance books and then there's the code of zoning. The one in the ordinance is the one I was reading, which is sixteen one, and you were reading sixteen one for code of zoning. So you actually have two ordinances.
That's good. That's ground for appeal.
Well, it depends on which board you go to, the board, the board about the mayor or the. Which one you go to, the board, the board about the mayor and the council. You've got two options.
That's why it's not fussing, it's getting the understanding. I was, I, I knew I read something and you read something. It was pretty too different. That's why it's not fussing, it's getting the understanding, I was, I, I knew I read something and you read something, it was pretty two different things, two different.
Well, what's that saying? Let me help you prepare, open the line. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Locke.
Uh, we, we got to shift to me.
Just to graphic, wanted, um. Correction, um, shall we?
Take the twenty five thousand dollars.
It's separate.
From the A R P ones.
Yes, that was just mentioning of a grant. Okay, so Ms. Holmes has made her note. All right, so that brings us to.
We got a group, we got a.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Finance committee. No report, okay. Moving on along, we just heard from Ms. Rogers. Reports of city officials or employees required by law, by action of governing bodies, anything?
Yes, um, back to my, um, original thing, I asked for the number citations that's been written.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so is it, she, this, hold on there.
Yes, sir.
This, this, this Miss Angela, um, second time saying is like, at what point we gonna receive?
Third or fourth time.
I'm sorry, it's the fifth time asking, at what point we gonna receive the information that she's seeking?
Okay, we'll work on it tomorrow. I mean, this, you know, it's been a lot going on, so.
Can we, will, will we have it for the next city council?
I, I, I think you can have it before waiting for the impact. Whatever is, whatever is put together, we can have it hand delivered to you as we leave with the other information.
Hand deliver or email, you don't want to worry.
Citation. Okay, that brings us down to. Now, that's right, we all need action. All the ordinance and the resolutions introduced, the previous meetings, don't have anything on that, do we, Attorney Jones?
So, I'll check with Dan, see if you got anything that's on it.
Oh, no.
Not yet.
I, I do, I do have something, a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What we doing about East Side School?
East Side School is being condemned, that's as far as I have legal wise. Parks, I think Public Works is the next department on that one, I have not been informed that we're paying anything. I just know that that's, that it's condemned, I'm not aware of if it's been bid or anything has occurred since then, that's outside of me.
Okay.
I have no, no update in that regard, that would be administration.
So do you?
Tracking down the, uh, the environmental study, that was one done and to avoid having to pay for duplication of work, that, that's where we are with that.
What, you talking about for the, the old, the East Side?
Okay, that brings us to.
I'm here, hold on, you, you said, you said, can you speak again about East Side, if I misunderstood?
Okay, East Side, Mr. Orles was waiting, tracking down environmental study on East Side School. That's where it is to determine the asbestos level and then can proceed with the cost and everything associated with it.
Okay, do you know how, do you, do you know how long that process normally take?
I, I, I'm unable to answer that in duration of time, but once he finds the, uh, that environmental study.
You gonna let me know?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Why haven't we, why haven't you been fined, that's a private, we don't own that property, it's owned by a private citizen, right? Still owned by the owner.
Yeah, we've condemned it, I mean.
I, I, I know we condemned it, but it's still owned by her, we should have sent out something to give her X amount of data, then she should have started being fined by now, but this has been going on too long.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we've given her X amount of data, about sixteen times.
So at this point, she should have been, uh, uh, received some, some from the court.
She's been there, uh, and she's, she hasn't been to the new one yet, she's just the old one a couple dozen times. Uh, she's, she's been condemned.
But people, people are not afraid, uh, that's one thing.
That, that's.
Nobody's afraid because they know City Bastrop is going to do that.
Well, that's, that's part of, if you send, it's part of anything in the way of law, if you send a lawsuit, you don't proceed with that.
Right.
So if you send citation, you don't go forward then.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, to figure back on, you said, Mr. Orles is checking to see if I asked this?
It's, I, a study has been done in that building and another building.
So it's been done, it's been done?
They were checking through schools to see if they have anything documented.
No, the reason I asked was because if we have somebody here doing a study, is it possible, since we paying them already, that the study was from a, 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 a.
Well, that's possible, but these are old studies, they, because the school was sold, they did it out from their property. So, that's the research that's being done, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Once we bring somebody in to do that, they can get packed to the.
Yeah, because, yeah, if we bring somebody in, they, they way, I mean, each council person can at least identify some, some adjudicated, like, property houses in their district, and, you know, go.
Okay, all right, thank you for that observation.
Can we, can we make a motion?
He's not a father, he's a home.
Yeah, but she, we got that on the agenda, can we address that?
Wait, wait, wait.
Three hours.
Three hours.
I've had you on time, it's three hours.
Three hours?
Three hours.
Okay, well, we'll continue fighting fight.
Three hours, that's good.
Um. My name, I'm in business. Uh, we did, oh, resolutions, A and B, so we have C resolution twenty five twenty, eight eight eight, resolution of support. For Delta Regional Authority Community Infrastructure Fund, civil grant application. Okay, this is a resolution, the portal is open, and we have, um, collected information to apply for the community infrastructure grant. The last time we applied for this grant, they ran out of money before they got to us, so we're now making an application again. And we are asking for a resolution of support to go along with the application.
And that's the position of the staff, the staff?
Yes, that's, that's right, we had to commit to, um, a percentage of. So we're asking for a resolution of support to file with the application.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Properly moved, and second, are there questions?
Five hundred five two thousand dollars. Give it one time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Another match. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Uh, resolution, uh, two five two zero eight nine, a resolution of support for the L gap grant. That's one that's due on twenty eighth of this month, so we're having to work against the time on that. We are, uh, Mr. Orles, if you would come, is that we looked at the possibilities of what we can apply for with all L gap funds.
Do we get a copy there?
And we, we didn't have.
What is we, uh? Go ahead, we talked about the possibilities based on what's eligible. And it is our recommendation. Go ahead.
Yeah, our recommendation is, is the, the funds are through the Office of Com- Community Development, it's the local, uh, governmental assistance program. And it's a maximum of fifty thousand dollars, one of the things that, that when you look at the criteria that, that might would, uh, that it would meet was it had to be on public property, and we looked at, we have a piece of property located adjacent to, uh, H V Adams Cemetery, and we're, we're running out of cemetery plots, so we're, we're applying for that. The grant to see if we can clean that piece of property, level it, and have a survey for, for cemetery plots.
Do you, do you have the resolution in front of you, Jake?
No, Mr. Mr. Donald has to make the resolution.
We can't move on.
I'm just pulling the, I'm just pulling the data and stuff together to put on the application.
Yeah, the, the reason I asked was, we, we didn't have that, we don't have that to.
We don't have enough package, Mr. Orles, we can't, we'll be profitable, I think it's not the overall endgame, not as right.
So right, so right now, it's, we'll be open, your word, and I'll.
Right, I, I don't think.
I thought the resolution. Attorney Jones, the resolution for the support. The application is due on the twenty eighth.
Resolution for support?
For the L gap.
For the L gap grant.
Twenty eight, this month?
I don't, I don't.
Yes, sir.
What's it, what's that, we got it too?
Uh, I don't hear it, it says twenty five twenty zero eight nine.
What's that number, Mr.?
We, we don't have, we don't have that.
What was that number again, Mr. Orles?
According to the agenda sheet, it's twenty five dash twenty eight nine.
Okay, let me.
Twenty eight nine?
I mean, regardless of what you do up there, I mean, we haven't had time.
You want to fold over the grant?
So here you go. Here you go.
I, I mean, that's what, it is due on the twenty eighth, does anything?
So you, so, so, so just, I'm asking a question, so, so you want, you want me to, you want me to make a vote on something I never seen?
Okay, I just read it, it's a resolution, a resolution for support for the L gap.
I know, I asked, I asked you a question. I asked you, I said, do you want me to make a, you want me to cast my vote on something I never seen? I'm asking.
I can tell you how to vote one way or the other.
I know, but you, you just asked me a question, so I'm asking you a question.
Okay, I'm asking you a question back.
Yeah, I, I would.
Do you want, if, if you wish, do you wish not to vote?
Not when I never seen it.
Okay.
I know.
He drafted one now.
Cause he told me to do that, you know, we can do a special meeting. But I, I mean, I can't, I can't, that's, I won't be able to do much of this, it's just not a thing.
I can draw off anything, I don't. I thought we had that L gap meeting on the nineteenth. It's the last with, um, Robert Wax, that's correct.
Yeah, that's.
I just have, why can't you have a resolution number, if a resolution has not been drafted, where did this number come from?
Ms. Holmes, where did that number come from?
I was asked to assign the number.
Yeah, so now, so now, again, so you, you asked us for a vote for something that we never seen.
We can't move on.
We can, we can take, I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to be available, available and flexible to do a special meeting, so if you need me to come back this week, I will, once I receive this resolution in front of you.
What, what does the resolution need to say, Mr.?
I know. I don't, I.
So it's not a resolution already?
I don't. I, I, I have to know this, I don't know what the L gap is for, what the specifics of it are.
And so we cannot vote on this. If our attorney don't know, we can't vote on this.
Okay, the L gap grant, as Mr. Orles said, if you don't want to vote on it.
That's not it, ma'am, we cannot just sign off on something that we don't, we, we, we can all read, we have to be able to read it and look at it. And then we definitely are in support of it, we don't want to lose the money, but you are asking us to do something that you should not. We cannot vote on something that we do not have in front of us.
I really thought the resolution.
And I know it may be like a simple mistake, but we, we need it in front of us.
And that's what I was telling you, so you were saying that, so I don't want to see this grant go through, and that's not the case, what I'm, what I'm telling you.
As it is, don't go, because it is working against time.
But it's not, but it's, this, this definitely, I see the council, I just received my papers at nine o'clock last night.
I understand.
It's just a support letter?
It's just a resolution of support.
They, they get input, we're gonna start. I make, I make a motion, I make a motion on the table just, cause I, I don't want Devin to draw up something last minute. I'm trying to find one, I think I did one in Sterling, but I'd have to.
May I make a motion to allow Mr. Howard Locke to re-organize?
I said that, I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we, we don't, we don't, we don't table it, whatever it were.
Uh, other, new business?
So we, so, it's most on the floor of the table.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So whatever day it's convenient for you.
My only consideration is the various schedules that you all have, it's not made for one item, it's a simple resolution that says you support. What Mr. Orles was saying about cemetery.
I, I don't know what Mr. Orles was reading, I don't know where he was reading it from, so you asked me to, to, from, did you do it, I'm not gonna do it.
No, I'm, I'm, okay, 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 item number eleven, uh, new business. Discussion demolition of structure at thirteen oh five M. Okay, uh, Mr. Bradford?
Yes, thirteen oh five M, it says, uh, the laminated property, uh, the fully juris on the letter. Way we did it right, get it permission on their behalf, by the adjudicated, it's still a legal point, or the owner of the property have to, Mr. Donald has drawn up a, uh, a endeavor agreement?
Yes, uh, I need the woman specific now.
Okay, well, okay, well, you don't draw that, you had it, we had other stuff, maybe the death penalty, but.
Yeah, I've got, I've got everything going down to the name.
You have it?
I just didn't know how to spell the name exactly.
Okay, I think it's Mary Hawkins.
No, the, the property.
Okay, the, a, a description of the property?
No, the property owner.
Oh, I think the person authorized it was, is Carolyn Harris.
Yeah, that's who I had, Carolyn, I had C A R O L I, that's who I had.
Okay, thank you.
What, what are you doing there?
This is property out of District B, uh, money that was given to District B, this is one of the projects that we're taking up, we're tearing down thirteen oh, we're demolating thirteen oh five M.
Can I kind of, kind of make a suggestion for you in front of?
Sure, please.
Uh. Being what I was told, because if that house have asbestos, it's gonna, probably gonna run out on your fifty five thousand dollars.
Uh, that, 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 that's gonna be a misconduct.
Okay, I'm.
Uh, that, that's a great deal, that's gonna be helping.
For, for the, for the legal, the way it was structured was, is that the person, the, the owner, uh, person of the home would contract with the person to do it, and we reimburse up to the amount that he had sold, which was forty five hundred bucks.
Oh, I see what you do.
Yeah, that's what we came together with, was that, and they would present it to us, that after it was done, and as long as the properties were stored to meeting with the ordinances and the state law. So that it's in compliance now, then we would pay, we would pay, we would reimburse them.
So, I don't worry, so, I like it.
But that, that's coming out of that.
That's coming out of his.
Yeah, can he use a contractor to tear down and have a house?
So it was, they have to present us with it, it has to be returned to, the, the property then is returned to where it would meet and comply with the ordinances of Bastrop. And the state laws, if there's any political state laws, and at that point, they'd present us with the invoice for services for reimbursement of the forty five.
Can you recommend to, to, can you recommend?
Yes, yes, we do, now, who is the property after the demolition is done?
It, it goes back to, it's, it's the owner's property.
So how do we get the forty five hundred dollars back?
We don't.
We, we don't, so, that's saying that you give in the way, not giving away, that you allocate, I just want to be.
I'm sure it's specific.
Because I know what's gonna happen tomorrow.
Never mind.
Okay, what's gonna happen tomorrow?
Yeah, so, so here's, here's what the, the, kind of the benefit detriment of the cooperative endeavor agreement was, the benefit was, is that we don't. Yeah, so, so here's, here's what the, the, kinda the benefit detriment of the cooperative endeavor agreement was, the benefit was, is that we don't have to go through the hearing, we don't have to have an engineer report, we don't have to produce all these costs, and we don't have to worry about finding a contractor. The detriment is, is that, uh, we also don't get to rec- recoup our cost, but we don't have all the administrative cost either.
But, but you couldn't, but you couldn't buy a property with fifty dollars.
Correct, you can do it through a C E A.
She said you could do that.
As long as you pass it through a C E A, because.
Did I, did I just say my number?
Huh?
Did I just say my number? Did I just say my number? My cell phone number?
Is that?
I was going like that.
Well, well.
If you do.
He gonna, he gonna have the paperwork ready for me in the morning. Done that, okay. The way you do that. That's something I got, that's gonna have to be approved, we'll have to vote on that, that already, the, the fifty five thousand dollars.
You had to, the, the council asked to approve the cooperative endeavor.
Oh, okay, 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 but we need to have some motion to vote.
I, I would, I got some questions, you wanna hear? I got, I got a question, serious question. Because I don't care where the money come from, it's still city money. Whether it's brand or whatever, whether it's a jail fund, it's gonna come from the city funds.
No, it come from the part that already allocated to the, to county.
But.
Or used it out, at our special.
What he's saying is belong to the city, even though he, even though. I don't care about the brand or whatever.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Now. It's, I'm scared. I was, uh. I was, I was thinking this was gonna be, you know, um, I didn't think it was gonna go through private, private, I thought we was gonna partner with different organizations to go do it. You telling me we finna clean up a property, and we get finished cleaning it up? It's gonna be back to the person that we cleaning it up with, without assessing what we paid to clean it up?
Uh, uh, Mr. Green, can I, can I, can I?
I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Okay, okay, let me see, let me see.
One at a time, wait just a minute.
Let me see, go ahead.
Wait, um, Mr. Green, you posed a question, is that direct to?
Direct to. Direct to.
You don't wanna be in it?
No.
No, I'm asking a question.
Can I say one thing?
No, I'm asking a question.
Maybe, can I say one thing? I feel some kinda way, cause I, just I, I came back, I wouldn't reintroduce, Mr. Green.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Good motion, uh, Tapley, uh.
I wasn't ready to ditch it, I'm, I'm studying some of this, sorry about that.
Go ahead, folks, can I get a motion, Mr. Tapley? Can I get a motion to the meeting?
Okay.
All right. All right, all right.
Okay.
Jesus Christ.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
You go to green, ten, you make your claim.
Okay, because, uh, uh, I asked you this question because, you know, when we, when we paid that, that premium pay, you see what happened? We opened that new box, and you can't put it back in. Now, we're gonna, I, I, I wanna clean up light. I think we need to clean up light, but I was under the impression when we cleaned up somebody's property, that we was gonna be, we was gonna add that to their taxes. I, I didn't know that we was gonna go clean up somebody's property, and then give it back to them.
Can, can, can I ask, can I ask you a question?
I'm just making a statement.
Okay, let me, let me make a statement, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead and answer, Mr. Jay Green, and then, Mr. Bradford, and maybe we can have some clear.
Oh, let Mr. Bradford go ahead and answer.
We don't need to bombard with a bunch of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
I don't think that was directed to make.
Who did you ask for the question?
I think he was. So, look.
I brought, I brought, I brought, I brought this issue to, on the agenda.
Yeah, so I was asking, so he had the floor, so I was asking point of information with your goat, the council member, right? Yeah, yeah, can I ask you a question?
Well, I wanna, because I wanna, I wanna do some clarity.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, the, the, I'm gonna be real short, um, the rescue money that was allocated to each district.
Yeah.
To spend as their, their, their legion, knowing they did something within the community, and also non-profit, and also said private. Now, this is a private piece of lot that have been adjudicated by the Mohawk Parish Police Jury. The Mohawk Parish Police Jury had issued a letter saying they have no objection to us cleaning this property. The owner of the property says she have no objection, they don't have the money, that's why we got someone to bring, you gotta understand, having this stuff to stand around this community, because the people do not have the money. And we have an obligation to protect the other neighbors in the community. Okay, now, now with that said, that fifty, fifty thousand dollars or, we have the leisure use, as we choose, each, each councilman. And I have a, spoke with a private contractor, that would do it under five thousand dollars. And, and with that said, it wouldn't have to be bidded. Uh, I didn't think it had to come before the council, how each district get to spend their money.
I don't think so.
But, but, I mean, you know, now, now, back before the council, we might not never get it spent, we might not never get it.
Mr. Bradford, I have a question, I have a question, so, cause. Is this property adjudicated, or it's still owned by, that said, individual?
It's adjudicated by the parish, owned by a, a, a family individual, and then I have spoke with them, and they said, sure, they have no objection to us cleaning this property, and they gonna sign all for the end of their voice.
But.
Just like, uh, uh, what they call it just up here, the Mohawk Beauty.
So in other words.
Same thing they do.
So in other words, how about this, how about this, I, I'm, I'm just, just brainstorming, so, so if you have an individual, that have a piece of property. They haven't been adjudicated, but it's light. We can spend our money to get that cleaned?
Yes, under section six, uh, under section six of our charter, it say that we can tear down or remove anything that's a danger in a, a hazard in the community. And it don't say, at the, at the owners, but it say the city can take that action, and we should be able to do it, and, and we don't do it, you gotta realize, these people that owning this property. Two thirds of them can't afford to clean the lack of that house, Grandma, Grandma Day, Uncle Bob in California, Betty Jean in Texas, somebody in Detroit, and all this mess is still here.
I, I, I mean, I, I'm like.
I mean, I mean, you know.
It, it just, it just seem like it be.
Okay, 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 we have to sit as a responsibility, have been allocated money just for the cleanup, right, and do certain particular thing in our particular district, and we have the money, the money been allocated. We, we, we paid, we paid the employees, we paid everybody. Now, the fifty thousand dollars that were allocated to each district, those councilmen should be getting busy in their district, seeing what it take to clean it up. And that, and that, I, I'm not sitting back waiting to make a, uh, you know.
I didn't.
That's what we asking, I asked Ms. uh, Mrs. uh.
The reason, Mr. Bradford.
Mr. Hardy, the same thing, and we spoke about non-profit organization, I also have endeavoring for a non-profit organization, we getting ready to give ten thousand dollars to, we not getting that back.
We can do it?
Well, I, 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 I think that you committed, I just wanna put your name.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing on what I'm saying, cause when, when, when we was awarded the fifty five thousand dollars, I was trying to come a ways to, to do it with, within the city, but. Your way prevent all of it, you could just get some, okay.
Private contractor, and then we, that, that, that way long round, you go to the city.
Definitely, so you, you, you're on record saying it's legal.
So the way you make it legal is the cooperative endeavor.
Okay, with the C E A, it's, it's gonna be legal.
Correct, you have to articulate the benefits you're getting, the benefit they're getting, you're cleaning up light, but yes, you are giving up the right to get a lien.
So, Mr. Bradford, you said my word, we about to get busy.
Okay, okay, I, I, we, okay, Miss.
Adjudicated property, or just any property?
It, it's, it's any property that would meet the status for being a dangerous or, or dilapidated structure, which is a, a. A very specialized word that has legal meaning behind it, it has to be one that, when we do those, when we condemn things. We have an engineer who looks at it, who says, yes, issues report, yes, this is, it meets the state definition for dangerous and dilapidated, like we had with the Larry Brooks, his side building.
So I give the Larry, the Larry building, if I get a, a contractor to just tear it down?
Yeah.
I got, I got legal question.
But, but you have to meet that definition, but what, what we're giving up in return for them allowing us to consensually do it without having to go through that process is. And all the, that, that unnecessary red tape is, is you're, he's giving, he elected to give up the, the tax, the being able to place the bill on the taxes. He said, look, we're not gonna hit their taxes, cause they, we went to them, they can send it to it, they're gonna do this without all the hassle and red tape.
Well, I got, I got a question, well, can we do this, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bradford, but we don't wanna get into a place where we clean somebody's property, and then they turn around and sell it. So, as long as you maintain that property, I don't care, I, I can, can't go along with what you're saying, but you don't wanna get in the business of going cleaning somebody's property up, making it look good, and then they turn around and sell it for a profit. So if we spend forty five, five, forty five hundred on, just say forty five hundred, can you stipulate in that seat, whatever it is, that if you sell the property, that the city is gonna be required you to give the money back that they invested in cleaning the property?
All right, this, a C E A is a contract.
Or, or they are reasoning that.
Or you put it in a language.
If you put that in there, I'm, I'm all for it. Or you put in a language that, that, by this coming up, you, you give it to us, but we, we'll do away with the, the, uh, the taxes it's on, cause pretty much everybody is adjudicated, owed taxes on it. So if we clean up the property, it belongs to the city, but therefore, we don't need your, the taxes that you owe on it, is that possible?
Can they turn on, oh, oh, only gift of that property back to the city?
Well, you can, you can do that, yes, is the answer, and the way, the way you do that is, is you just file that ordinance in the thing, and they even have to consent that they're not gonna object or redeem.
Mr. John, can I, can I, can I speak, one minute, but, but, that one minute, I, I'm, I'm with the, the mayor. One minute, Mr. John. And I, I'm understanding clear for, for other councilmen to have pretty, uh, clarity on this, that this particular property. Do, uh, have adjudicated property, adjudicated property, this particular adjudicated property, it, it no more than a hazard or a lot, and you mentioned something about engineer, believe me, I don't have to pay, you need to know that dilapidated, cause the city on the ground already, that particular property. Okay, but what, what I'm trying to say is.
I agree.
Okay, okay, what I'm trying to say is, that we do not only give it, adjudicated, it don't, uh, to the police jury of the city, they already have a lien on the property, would I could be correct?
That is correct, it's not paid, it's because of taxes.
If adjudicated, you gonna go through a tax procedure, before they, before they do it, then they can't sell it.
See, what, what I'm saying is, if you, if you go clean up something belongs to the police jury, that's their jurisdiction. And if they turn around, just like, who, who sell business first, that, that lady do, she do, she sell property for them also.
E M P.
E M P, does they, they sell property, what we don't wanna get into is go clean it up, and then they gonna make a profit off of it.
No, they won't be, they, 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 they go there, the, the, go to a E M P that Daisy Monroe you're speaking about, that, they have, they had a, that was a thousand dollar process to start. And these particular locks and property, we're talking about, if you clean up and do that thing, you still gonna get that.
Well, I, I think the easiest way to do it is, when you draw up the, 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 the contract, you put in there, if you sell it, we, we, we need to redeem our money back, we not gonna clean that enough for you to make a profit off of it. As long as you keep it in a family thing, and, and it's your property, and you paying the taxes on it, whatever, but we can't go clean up something that you make a profit off, but everybody be up here, clean my, y'all. Would y'all please come clean my property, clean my property? Yeah, also, also too, everybody owe, everybody owe taxes on adjudicated property, they owe taxes on it, so that's why, if you come in and say, hey, we gonna clean this up, let us have it, but the taxes that you owe on it, we do away with it.
That's adjudicated.
That's adjudicated.
That's a profit that's not adjudicated.
Then that, then y'all will have to come up with some kinda contract provisions where if they sell it or they do something, then you can recoup it at the next.
So, so, so it's a law?
Yes.
I, I can check real quick and tell you. I believe, yes, it is adjudicated, no, it's not adjudicated, it's the taxes were bought by somebody, somebody else has the taxes, so that, the taxes to adjudicate, nobody buys a tax sale, and that gives you the right to go in for claim ownership if you want. You have to exercise it, but you have a right to do it. So it's not adjudicated, it's just the taxes that were purchased by that individual out there. It, it, what it is, is here, is, is, is the, is discretion of how far you can go in a contract, it's not, everything's legal there, it's just what provisions do y'all want.
Can you find me the contact person from the lottery?
Yeah, I actually have his phone number, I've talked.
We can, we can, we're not gonna talk to him. I guess, I guess what I was saying about the, about the adjudicated property to the parish, it's different between city, cause we go clean that property up, you can't tell them what to charge, if they go sell it for the, the property taxes, if they go, if you go spend forty five hundred, and they go sell it for twelve hundred, that's your loss. You can't not tell another, another, when this is about another jurisdiction, what, what they will and can charge, that's the only thing I'm getting at, you go clean it up, they gonna sell it for whatever they wanna sell it for, they don't care, you just clean it up to make it look good.
I understand that to a degree, but what I'm trying to say is, I don't think the police jury, even though they have a adjudicated lien on it, I'm, I'm gonna get this particular piece of property I'm speaking of, okay? Have, 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 have a adjudicated, adjudicated on, and the owners are not gonna never clean it up, cause they're not gonna ever pay the adjudication, that, that, okay? And all for them to sell or transfer this property, any other name or do anything, they have to pay adjudicated police jury their taxes. Now, if we wanna spell out that, if, if the, if they pay the taxes, the, the tax is not gonna even be worth, the, the tax is not even worth for, what would you, what did you to get it for?
That's what I'm getting at, they, they gonna sell it for, you gonna go spend forty five hundred, you clean up, and they gonna sell it for a thousand dollars.
Yeah, you see, but we get, we get, we, what, we get out of as a city, we get a justification, what we need, that's the only, I mean, section six of, section six of our, or tell us that we have the right to take any action, anything, condemn danger to the community, and that fall back on us. And, I mean, we have the money, uh, see, we can't turn this into a, a revenue collection, we gonna buy property, clean up, and then turn around and get revenue and get taxes off.
See, I don't, we, we need to go in that direction, we need to clean it up, go in that direction.
Attorney Jones. Attorney Jones. Okay. The property is adjudicated. But you research the legal aspect of, can both parties get in line? If property is sold, if, and the police jury gets his share, put the lien on it, and the city of that gets his share.
Yes, all the liens have to be paid through the adjudication process.
So I think that's, uh.
The problem is to clean up, I mean, I don't think, don't think that way, but, but long as they clean up, if they, if they wanna sign onto a lien on their property, I'm having a problem with that.
And they can make an agreement in the C E A that they allow us to place a lien.
Right, I just wanna move forward, clean it up, okay, that's the key, that's, that's, that's.
So we can put it in there that they're gonna agree to allow us to place a lien up to, up to the amount expended.
Okay.
Don't anybody ever say I don't draw something up with people.
So that's, we have a C E A. Robinson Williams, through the Act three ninety seven P project, and that's one I'm gonna.
Which one?
Did y'all, did y'all, did y'all both approve that C E A?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, you got a motion on.
I made the motion.
I made the motion, I made a motion to, uh, what was that click that, uh, dilapidated property, what was that, thirteen oh five meeting?
Okay, yes, yes. Thirteen oh five, okay, Mr. Bradford is making a motion, uh, with conditions attached to it, as stipulated, uh, by Attorney Jones, and taking in consideration everything that is considered here on this property, thirteen oh five. To do a cooperative endeavor agreement, what is your pleasure? On your face?
You can get a second.
Maintain a motion, what is your pleasure?
You have a second, please.
You have to get a second.
Okay, you make the motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Mr. Okay.
I, I'll get a second.
Okay, one second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any more? Okay, motion carried. All right, the P project, this is a cooperative endeavor agreement, with Robinson Williams, and you will see this one is, is for the sum of five thousand dollars to be paid to. And this is coming from a grant specifically for children, for children, and. As you will see, as stipulated, and this is parallel to what's stipulated in the grant. This is a cooperative endeavor agreement. This is for children at three ninety seven, we can only get the second half of the money, when we spend the first half, okay? And that's the same thing with, um, like the light, the fence over there, we took care of that, and the rest of that part of that grant, so this, this is a separate grant of four thousand five thousand dollars, we can't get the other half until we spend this part. What, what grant is coming from? This is coming from Adrian, uh, let's see, it uses proper title, Representative Fisher, and State Senator Katrina Jackson.
I won't give that to you, Mr. Bradford, this money.
Okay, this grant, I think we received money in July, wasn't that for, it's almost, but we received the money in July, we could not spend it until the budget was adopted. It's almost, but we received the money in July, we could not spend it until the budget was adopted. And it was adopted in, in October. The total grant is twenty-five thousand.
So we, so you, we still got money, which you, we, we used it for promoting safety, after Christmas, we used five thousand. But you five thousand for this, and I have to submit a report to the, um, to the Pete project on how we utilizing these funds.
So the rest of it is gonna be used on promoting, um, unity.
Is this the doctor, is this not the Dotson Park? No, no, Mister Brathwaite, hold up, I, I, I do wanna research that, I'm, I'm like two push things, three different grants. I'm, I'm asking, uh, I'm asking the clerk, what grant? Well, I know you don't wanna get put in this, I'm, I'm asking the question, cause we got two five thousand dollars.
This is how much for a Pete grant, Representative Adrian Fisher. It was twenty-five, and we did get two twenty-five thousand dollars grant. One came to Francis Thompson, which was the cleanup. This one is for.
Cleanup.
For children, cleanup for blight, the fence, and the other part of it is, um, can be utilized.
I thought one part of, uh, this is Francis Thompson's, uh, 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 okay. Cause it's two, and one of them is for blight, and the other one was for, supposed to been used specifically for Dotson Park.
Well, Dotson related, I've spoken with him, and it's fine because we realize children are coming from different places.
This is the, that, I was right, this is the Dotson Park.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I know, I'm gonna do my research.
So any of the Dotson Park grant been utilized?
For Dotson Park, that's what I'm.
The last one is gonna be used for. Coming from everywhere. The other part, we. Which is what? But we had to do something for the children. I spoke with, uh, I spoke with, this week, this is what. The after school tutoring for four to twelve years of age, projected number of students.
And this is, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm making myself clear. This fund was for Dotson Park, it was two different grants. This fund that, that she's spending right now, that America is talking about spending, was dedicated to Dotson Park.
You're talking like Dotson Park?
Like Dotson Park, Dotson Park, like when they gave money to the food truck, that was not in Dotson Park. That was, that come under Dotson Park grant, though. Now, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me.
Ho- hello. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just here for, I'm just trying to get clarity, so, we have a Dotson Park grant?
It's called Dotson because of the location. I have the, I have the, in my bag.
What I'm saying, in order for it to be a Dotson Park grant, you have to, you have to state something pertaining to Dotson Park, in order for it.
Are you willing to put Dotson in there because? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get why it became a Dotson Park grant, so it had to be something in place when you gonna apply for the grant to be consistent of something dealing with Dotson Park.
And, and, and you will.
So that's, that's what we asking like, so is, have, with this grant, have anything to utilize for Dotson Park?
The last part would call them, they did Dotson Park.
So how much is the last quarter?
It was left out because, and this, and, and because we have community engagement, we're gonna invite non-proper agencies that offer services for children.
The, the reason, the reason why I asked, because I think I had spoke with David, and part of mine, and Mister Locken, I spoke about it. Quarter of fifty-five thousand that we, that we have is for purchase equipment for Dotson, like the basketballs are like gripping the floor. But we have a grant that's.
It's for activities. It's for activities. But we do have to utilize what's available, how we gonna get the children there, who's gonna, and that, this is a facility that we are doing the cooperative.
I think, I, I think what you're doing is, is a, you know, a great idea, well, we talking about Dotson and need, I was just out there yesterday. Cause I still go out there to basketball, but, but, I mean, we can't, the kids can't, was dribble on the, on the basketball floor properly without it being so because slippery, Jake, you been out there, right? It need to be, it need to be, it need to be, I don't know who, who did the floor, but I don't think they did a great job. Because now the kids, go out there right now, the kids flying, they ice hockey. But, so, so now we have a grant, cause I, I'm using some, I'm wanting to purchase basketball, Mister Locken will do some other things. But we have a grant that's definitely Dotson Park, that's not being used at Dotson Park, that's crazy.
No, the, the, the children, it's meeting the children where they are. We, we don't have the same resources that Mister Brathwaite was saying, he's gonna have tutors over there. So we are.
Now, that's, that's, that's a great. Cause I, I don't, I, I guess I don't want you to, to make it seem like we, we don't want. Yo, but it's just like, I, I, I moving out there on a regular, it's just like. It's a, it's a greater need, it's, it's a different need for enhancement inside Dotson Park.
We get the other half of the money, then we can, but we gotta spend the first half before it goes away. And we were delayed because the budget was adopted in October. The first half of the, the original plan. The first five thousand went to safety, promoting safety.
The other five went to the food truck. I got the breakdown, I got the breakdown.
And the five thousand.
So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I guess what I'm saying, when we had the Arbor Fund, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Jones. You supposed to spend the Arbor Funds in the manner in which it was given to you, right? You got specifications that you have to spend it.
Yeah, there, there's regulations around American Rescue Act Funds.
Okay, so, if they give you a fund for Dotson Park, and you not using in the manner in which the grant was, that you applied for the grant for. That's kinda misinformation.
No, that's a very strong word to use.
It might be wrong, but it's definitely, it's definitely on the line for the.
No, no, sir, it's not, because I talked to Representative Fisher. I was doing it, I said, okay.
So what are the rules of the grant states? Do the lines of the grace states that you have to do something in pertaining to Dotson Park itself?
Okay, we get the other half, we, we, some of this is a, is a result of the delayed budget being adopted.
No, it, it, it can't be, because you already utilized five thousand, five thousand ways. No, you can't say that.
How, how much is that grant?
The grant was twenty-five thousand, we got half of, we got half, we can't get the other half until we spend the first half, and I got notification that if it's still late.
So why wouldn't you use the first half to actually enhance Dotson Park itself?
Cause there were, there was some stipulation to do something for children. So we can use the second half, and in fact, I've already spoken to, uh, energy about life.
Yeah, cause I, yeah, cause I, I think, and I'm, this is another thing that's on my list, uh, change the basketball goals in Dotson, so you can get down, down the court, it's still. So you're like, the first half, I can't, can't, can't talk about.
I spoke with, I spoke with the, the administrator, and said, this is what we are going to do, and she said, it's fine. But this is serving the children.
Mary, this, I, I keep what you're saying, but, I, okay, can you, can you tell me, I hate to say that, but how often do you go to Dotson Park? Because if you, if you, if you, like, by me saying it, someone like myself that go out there, play with the kids, train the kids, shoot basketball on the court, there's a need in fixing the Dotson Park court, you still have dead spots in that court. So I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I love, I really get something to, uh, arrange, but I, but the fact that we haven't did nothing for Dotson Park, it, it's just bothering me. Cause I, you know, I'm not feeling that, you know, it don't matter what they're shooting, but, um, them kids can't shoot basketball properly. The basketball, the, the, the basketball that they are using, I think they maybe have two or three new basketballs, but everything else is probably not as good.
Are you asking to change the floor?
No, I, no, I, see, see, I, I. But you, it's supposed to be all grip floor, you can put it on the floor. It's, it's a lot of things, and you have a great person out there, too, you, y'all, you know, everybody, yeah, they can do everything about the court, just like.
We're gonna try to spend the first half and put it towards the children, where it have direct impact. I can't get the second half to take under consideration.
So what type of money are we talking about?
For this five thousand dollars that will go to after school tutoring for four to twelve years of age, industry student and need to, projected number of students to be served, which is the number that I have.
So how much money are you gonna have left, you said the remainder?
Oh, now, okay, after we give the five thousand here, we will have two thousand. Uh, because we spent five thousand on the safety, and spending, uh, Mister Green, you were there, that, when we promote the same.
I didn't know that was coming, I didn't know that was Dotson Park money.
Any of it, any of it was clear.
Don't do them, don't put them two together.
Okay, all right, well, I, I, I stand back what I can.
The amount of money that you're gonna have left, so how much is the total, that, that, the third part is?
Okay, total grant, twenty-five thousand, half of that, it's twelve thousand five hundred, the other half is twelve thousand five hundred.
The other half can go strictly to Dotson Park.
It can. Yes.
This is gonna, this is gonna go towards Dotson Park.
Okay, if it's alligators with Dotson Park, I think it should stay in Dotson Park.
We don't have the, uh, we don't have the tutors to put out there.
Well, that's what the money is for.
But the children are gonna benefit.
But, but the kids on that side of town is disadvantaged, some alligator for a certain side of town, for a certain group of people, Dotson Park, Pacific Dotson Park. It should stay in Dotson Park. We should start moving around to face estate, uh, 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 freshman bin. You stay with alligators at Dotson Park, it should stay where Pacific, stay where, where, where the grant is for. We still out there, we can go, you, you can go to Park Park, you can go to, uh, Little Park down the street from me, I ain't know the name of it, but Parks, it, it, it's alligator for a specific use, and that's Dotson Park.
So, so, so let me ask you a question, Mary, so with that, with that Dotson Park grant, so like, like, the water pumps inside Dotson Park, can this be used to purchase with this funding? Because there's need for that.
I, I really, go back and look at, uh, I, I spoke.
Cause you, you just asked me for ideas, I'm telling you. Also, the water pressure, if I'm not mistaken, the water pressure at Dotson Park, it's been, it's been, we probably been a couple weeks, not months, without being able to go in Dotson Park, because they didn't have no water inside Dotson Park.
That's an issue that we need to take care of, screw city funds, and not a grant, that's.
I'm, I'm just giving you ideas, cause I, cause I, I go out there.
Give, send them to an email, text, and how we gonna get them to?
Well, we have, may, may I say something, may I?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I believe when money is allocated for Pacific, you should be used for that, but speaking of Robert, I don't wanna take anything because uh, I found A R P money, whatever it is, I, we're allocating ten thousand dollars for after school program for the same facilities. Now, we need to use that money in Dotson Park, that's allocated for Dotson Park, uh, District B, we're allocating ten thousand dollars to Robinson Williams After School Program. And, and, and I think the attorney just said, you know, you know, that, that, that not. Cut someone out of something else that advocate, though, the low, most low income, that who really need the money is Dotson Park, the community. After they speak of parks, you speak of a community, uh, uh, William does a wonderful job on Ms. and District B, and I, I'm all for it, I wish I could give more, but I'm trying to stretch a little more further. Okay, but, but ten thousand dollars is that we can use from the A R P money, the American Rescue money. Right here, the next page over, is already allocated ten thousand dollars for their after school program. That's not demanding Dotson Park, cause this guy was a weaker park, and was a historical park in this community. And every time we can get allocated to Dotson Park, should be used for Dotson Park. Uh, I'm sure they have a, a one hundred and sixteen thousand thing, they can use the five thousand dollars for Dotson Park.
Whenever we have a basketball league, you know, we, we need some more jerseys.
Okay, you, you wanna just table this, and I, well, I talked to.
I just thought ideas out of America's, I'd be out here, I'm sorry, alright, I, I got, I got a little voting behind you, I'm sorry.
But I spoke with, I spoke with her, this goes to the heart of, of doing something for the children, and it will come at Dotson Park. The rest of that money will be used to bring all the agencies together, just like, yeah, many convenions.
Just like when you walk in Dotson Park, when it's raining, you can't just walk through the door without going through the water.
Okay, but this grant was not given for, for that town repair.
No, I, I was just going, I, I thought it was for Dotson Park.
I'd like to make a motion that it be tabled. To the American, to bring back from the side of the.
This is declared, if I, if that's a motion, uh, table it, it's a family.
That was motion to table that. Dotson Park, just get second.
All in favor? Okay, discussion.
I'm requesting a ten thousand dollar cooperating endeavor agreement with Robinson Williams from, out of the A R P money, how much do I have there now? At, at a ten five, I mean, I, this is five, this would be ti- this would be fifteen, okay, that'll leave me thirty-five.
Miss Williams, sorry.
Well, you, I think you're far within the, oh, you're gonna say?
Well, hold up, Mister Brathwaite. What, what you say we wanna give? No, I'm talking about give this ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars. They got a, a tutoring program here.
I got, I got all what you give. What I'm getting at is, uh, uh, numbers keep going up in the, we, we want to table five, they wanna give ten.
No, we table, we table five, because coming from the dotting program, this is, uh, coming from A R P money, that was the last one. And that's our district money.
It always tell me, your money?
The district big money, oh, hell, the one.
David, while we were seeing the CEA, can we get one done? For, what I have to do to get one done for recent fine, but I, I really, I speak my prayers. Uh, just, just text me with the details. That, we coordinated about it, and just got the details.
We have a motion for the floor, will you make the motion? Oh, oh, no, he hasn't made the motion, oh, oh, I made the motion, I, I made the motion that we give Robinson Williams ten thousand dollars uh, endeavor, entered into agreement with District B, entered into endeavor agreement with Rob- Robinson Williams for ten thousand dollars. Second by which that.
I will move to second, all in favor? And in hope?
Oh, D D I said.
Wrong question first. Let's do a question, can, can, uh, can take back control of the meeting, Mary, so we can, cause suppose they have a question to ask, this is a question.
Okay, is that, that, there's no, we have, we have a five thousand dollars. I mean, you gotta look at the totality of what's about to happen here, I know we got this money. I think it should be a cap on what we can do with the money, with just individuals, right? It's still just, you, ten thousand dollars, I, I know it's a great idea, but that's a lot of money to give just one nonprofit organization. I think we need to have, I'm just brainstorming, I mean, it's question answer, I gotta write to my opinion, so, uh, I think we need to cap it off, even if it is your money, because it's still city money. And kind of look, when you look at it, they, they're not gonna look at it as a grant, you're just gonna look at you gave one organization, whether nonprofit or whatever, you gave them ten thousand dollars, I think that's a little steep. I mean, I wanna help and ask the community, but I think that is, uh, because when you open that new bar, then somebody else gonna come up here and want ten thousand dollars.
Right, that's fair. Yeah, I mean, uh, that, that'd be up to the section of the program, the submitted, I think it's about the program, I think it has the intention to use ten thousand dollars or more, I think we're just trying to give them five additional thousand dollars from another program. I think, I think, I, I mean, that's just your, your opinion, I'm responding, ten thousand dollars is all spelled out for the use, I like the way the proposal is written, I'm not just coming off the top of my head, it, this talk about the program, three month program for ten thousand dollars, two teachers. Uh, I mean, you know, it seemed to be suitable, uh, I, I would have to say one of the best proposals I have seen, you know, in my, in my lifetime, it benefits is all spelled out. Uh, it's eight eleven thousand, but we narrowed it down to a ten, uh, all depending, the, the, what I'm trying to say is agree, all depending the extent of the program, other, if I wanted to shoot marbles, I would ask for ten thousand dollars, shoot marbles. But we're talking about educating kids in a, a tutor and reading program, with this, this, with this organization is in a community that can use it, like I say, it could probably use the whole fifteen thousand, but. It was just coming from the wrong program, I had a problem with, from the wrong bank, but like I say, I think, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, but if somebody else come in my district and say, well, you gave Mister, uh. Uh, Robinson Williams, uh, ten thousand dollars, they should do the proposal, I'll look at it back, that would be basis up to, uh, decision of the district that it's coming from. I, I don't wanna put a cap on your district, you shouldn't wanna put a cap on me, uh, capital district.
We talking about district, this still city money.
I, I know it's city money, but.
Where it come from.
But, but if it's all.
Line is city money, I mean, I'm just, I'm just paying delegate, what I'm saying is.
Okay, what, what?
When you get, when you get later on, people gonna come up and they gonna want, they gonna want different things, and you just gave the state, we just gave one person ten thousand dollars.
If, if we had it, and it's a good program, and somebody come up tomorrow with a fifteen thousand dollar program, I think it's suitable, I think that would be the district, uh, who, whoever the council in that district to present it. And I think I should, I would want, you would want me to support yours, as well, I want you to support mine, I didn't think we were giving fifty thousand dollars to say, mother, may I? I thought we would have enough sense to see what good, what benefits our community, and I think Robinson Williams is one of the best communities in city of Bath.
I agree.
No one is.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I mean, I mean.
I think you missing, hey, just like you got a point, I got a point, let me finish, you finish, now let me, now, now let me finish, you had the floor, now my turn. Don't sit here and think that I don't wanna give them the money.
I didn't say that.
No, you missed the whole concept of what I'm saying, and you go ahead and do it, and y'all mark this down to this night, watch and see what happened with other nonprofit organizations. So, I'm not, I'm, you vote the way you wanna vote, I gotta write to my opinion, you gotta write to your opinion, that's your money, you spend the way you wanna spend it, but I'm telling you, just like that, other stuff started off good. Just like you do some of the churches, started off good, and then people just turn against it, you about to find out.
Just keep the faith.
Hey, Devin, uh, just, just on.
Mister Bradford.
I need to.
We have, we have a two C.
Did my C A go on?
Yeah, yeah, just check me, just check me the, the.
We have one for, for what Mister Bradford was advocating for, for community outreach to children from the city of Bath, about providing after school care, tutoring, and mentorship. Recreational activities to the youth for the furtherance of physical activity and exercise, okay, you have the other one from the peak project, which is the one that you complimented.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I didn't know, I, I, I said, I said, could use more money, only thing I have was the peak, uh, that was, uh, Mary, they should come in out of Docson Park, already been allocated for Docson Park. That, that's the only problem I have with that, but I, I, I refer to that they, uh, that this, uh, after school program could use more money, but like I say, but I'm gonna.
Go ahead and call for the vote.
Yeah, yeah, call for the vote.
Okay.
Aye.
Yeah, vote. Okay, we're down to speaker's agenda.
Nope, I'm down to D.
D is discussion resolution twenty-four, twenty-seven, three track program to reconsider the previous elimination of city sports programs.
Can I speak on that, Mary?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think that.
It's been, uh, a misunderstanding, if, if I remember serving correctly, I think that when, when the budget was adopted, it was more of removing funding, because I, I think that we had spoke to the fact of football. And at the time we, uh, adopted the budget, it was past football season, so we said, hey, don't need to have it, that money in football, uh, uh, line item for football when you pass football, so, and I, and I can't be wrong. But I, I just wanted to say that, I don't think that, I remember any council members saying, like, they eliminate, uh, when they get rid of any city sports.
Okay, well, I think there's a resolution that, that, that speaks to that, and I didn't write.
And I'm glad, and I'm glad you brought it up, because we have it in our package, and m- my name is signed as yay, Jay Green is signed as yay, Howard Locke is signed as yay, the names are Charles Bradford and Dee Green. There's no way that I said strip, just stop or eliminate programs, I said it for the record, last time I said it for the record again, I have grandchildren in Bath Struck that participates in programs. So why would I eliminate a program? I would not, and I'm furious about this, so what, what I want my grandkids to do, all of them go to Stoneton and play, no, I work, my daughter works, we trying to stay local. But when you look at this, um, uh, resolution, my name is signed, like, I agree to this, and I did not, I did not.
Okay, I did write the resolution, and all you have to do is look back at.
I didn't sign it, that's not my signature, and that's a problem too, why aren't we signing resolutions? At one time, we were signing every resolution, now we sign nothing.
Oh, that definitely not my hand.
Oh, it, for clarity, they have, I have instructed, when they make the resolutions, that there's no signature required of any member, because the vote is reflected in this.
Well, Devin, yeah, now, there's a problem with that, why I say that, is because of the resolution that came up earlier, we didn't see it, we just went on somebody's word. And now the whole thing has changed, where it says, the mayor appointed, council is left out, I didn't sign that, so when did it happen?
So, so.
So that's the, that's the point, when I said you need to have material in front of you.
Yeah.
There's no way I can go take a test and don't look at anything.
So, when they pass them over, since they're not signed, the vote that's recorded in the record, it, those writings, for anybody who's here in the public, those writings are my writing of the names who voted for the resolution.
But when it's signed, it gets mixed up, like, who was mixed up earlier?
Yeah, so.
Who mixed up?
So, they, for some reason, and I don't know why, they still want a name wrote on it, or told them the law is, it's a resolution, once y'all, once y'all both vote, vote, that's it.
But when something is miscreant, like, we eliminating a program like this, we need something in black and white.
So, so for, so for clarity, for anybody in the public, nobody on that council signed that motion, I simply recorded the vote on the motion, and it, you always know it's me, because I put the first letter of your name, a period, and then your last name.
But it didn't happen like this, we didn't, we did not intend for it to be deleted.
But what the, what y'all voted for that night in the resolution, that was there, this was the night the budget was passed.
Okay, you go, cause I got something, you know, I got all my records, just keep going, I'm, I'm gonna walk you all the way up to this, 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 this one right here.
So what was voted on was is to move the money from the way it was paid, because it's being paid to city teams. There was the football one was specifically eliminated, because the football season had already run, and there was no reason to put money in the football thing, because by the time the budget came through, the football season was over, and there had been no football program. So there was determined by the council that, hey, we don't have to allocate money there, because the football season's already gone, there was no money spent on football that year, because there was no football program that year. The track team was, the track money was taken out, because of, I gave the legal opinion that you can't pay for a track team, but you can have a track program, you can't have a track team, so it was taken out of budget.
But this is an elimination program.
Yeah, that, that, that's not, uh. But the, the way they're listed, so the way the items are listed in there, for a quick, I don't mean to cut you off, but the way they're listed in there reflects the budget line item, the way it was typed.
But we still are not deleting programs.
No, it was, it was never.
We deleted the money, because the season was over, but this is not what this says, it's saying that we as a council deleted, uh, some of the city sports programs. So you have to create, um, whenever you do ordinances or resolutions, as far as the people that's coming behind us, somebody come behind me and they put a list, it says that Angela Tappin agreed to, um. Eliminate sports programs, this is what this says.
Well, I, I, I think, I, cause I think, uh, the two intertwined, like, approving, approving the adoption of the budget, and, and removing some of the funds, I think soon somehow got.
They're, they're always intertwined, because you made alterations to the budget in the adoption instrument.
No, not, not, no, not from deli, not from eliminating a program, how, how would they be?
So, 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 wait, if you have, if you, if you, if you.
You, you can adopt the budget with, with amendments.
Correct, you see it, and the way those amendments are done is you have to list the line item, when it was listed on the budget, it was listed as those exact words.
But, but then the perception of it, that we canceled program.
You, you, you saying, you saying when the budget was adopted, you, just what you telling me, it was a line item to say removal of city programs?
No, no, there was nothing in there that said that, I'm trying to get to it before I read that, so I'm just talking about where the, the, I remember typing in, the, as every, as y'all going through them, which ones to take out, and I put, I always put, just like a cash.
Put the trash. That's what said it got intertwined, so when, when they said, when they made the motion to take out, not get rid of the program, it was just for.
It was to move the, it was to move the money to, to the appropriate bank.
But this resolution, it, it said reconsider the previous elimination of city programs. It was just a hot gun, like, for adopting the budget, that's why I said.
And Attorney Jones, at the last meeting, at the last city council meeting. At the last city council meeting, we asked the, we asked the mayor specifically about this, and she said it was a error with the flowers, she said the preparer must have made a mistake. Go back and look at the tape, when I, when she, when we was talking about this last time, she said, well, we asked her about removing this, she said, well, it must have been the preparer that, that did this. And also, and you know better than I know, we was talking about a team.
Yes, sir.
And, and the reason we were talking about a team, because, and the money, and actually, who's really trying to just.
Yeah.
Keep people, uh, from getting in trouble, because you misappropriated the eighteen thousand dollars, right?
Correct, so what, what you, what you have here is you have two things, you have two things running head off, okay?
Separating.
You, I'm gonna separate them for you, so it's real clear for the public, one is, is that, uh, when you're using accounting terms, talking about the budget, you can either do additions, subtractions, or you can call them deletions. It's either subtraction or deletion, it, deletion is whenever you just took the line item out, because, one, the football program, it didn't delete the football program, it deleted the line item. And so, the physical document that y'all voted on, that reflected, cause I drafted, the physical documents you voted on just deleted the line item, because the football season had already run, there was no need to allocate money there. So I used the accounting term deletion, the track program, we discussed that, they were paying for individual players, city employees, hotels, all this stuff. I advised y'all that it was against the law to pay that, so that was taken out, then the deletion of the miscellaneous funds is the accounting term you'd use to take it off the thing, if you were drafting a budget, you say, delete off the line item for miscellaneous funds. You didn't delete any programs, you only took out the football program money, because the season had already run, you took out the track program, because I advised you legally, you cannot pay for a team, and then you deleted out miscellaneous funds. Because that fund, you didn't know where anything was going, you said, look, we don't wanna allocate money there, so you can either make additions or deletions to the budget, and that's what it reflected, it was not a deletion of the wholesale program, or any way to impede. Administration or anybody from having a program, it was simply to reflect what was the current state, we proposed the budget in July, but it didn't get adopted till, uh, I believe this is actually, I put the date on there. It is October fourteenth, so the football season had run, so to have that money allocated in a current year budget, after the time the thing had run, was, was a knock, it was just, it was, it was gonna put money somewhere that would never get spent, you can go back to the general fund.
Right.
Mister Jones, that same night, we have a parent here that was concerned that we were deleting programs, now, you're, you're explaining it to us here, but what the public see.
Yes.
That three city council members deleted programs, that, that.
Perception.
Correct, well, if anybody is just.
Let me finish.
Sorry, just lost.
We want that corrected, we did not delete programs.
No, and, and I will put that on the record, that discussion that night, there was not a deletion of programs, any characterization, that is a mischaracterization of what it.
And Attorney Jones, it's kind of amazing to me, that, you know, we was pushed to try and get the budget passed, you remember that? We kept coming back, coming back, and to read this on the door, when it's talking about, the three council members that voted to pass the budget to keep the city going, we get thrown under the bus. Trying to make it look like that we did something that we didn't do, only fact we was trying to do was keep the city going, but you know what's gonna happen next time? We gonna read everything and compromising, when we compromise, it'd take us six months, we gonna read every line, we gonna dot everything, because you see what happen when you do a good deed? Think about it, the ones that passed the budget are the ones that's getting ostracized.
Yeah, that was, so, that, and, 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 D D can speak to this, you have accounting experience, we both discussed this, never checked it, when you amend budgets, you, it's not stifling something, it was simply, you can either make additions or deletions from budgets. That was just to delete the idol, it was not to.
But not the program, that's, that's what, that's why I stated for, that's why I stated for, and it misses, so, so much to credit to me, before I was adopting the budget, and with adoption, the, the council made their amendments, in which somehow, somehow it's just removing. The fund is, is removing the programs.
No, the, the, and, and for clarity, the football funds, by the time we came for adoption, had already run past the season, and so that money was gonna just sit there, and not be able to be used in other places, when it had been used already. The track program, uh, line item was actually a team, and I advised you legally, you cannot pay for a team.
Cause I, cause I, I also too, in, in, in regards to the track, I, I think that, uh, it was, it was. You was, you informed the council that it was illegal for this council to give any funds to track, so, and, and this, is, if I heard differently, then, you know, tell me, tell me this.
No, no, I, I will confirm that, the way in which the track funds had been expended was not, was not an appropriate way to expend the track.
And that's why this council had removed the funding for track, because we wanted to be legal, you know, you know, I, I voted the way I voted, but I, I stand with them when they, with, for legal purposes, because when they hearing from the city attorney that. What we was doing have been illegal, so all of, none of us wanted to, so we, everybody did what it took to be legal.
Yeah, the track, track, although, it, it was not a program, it was a team, there's a difference between a program and a team. Yeah, the track, track on, uh, it, it was not a program, it was a team, there's a difference between a program and a team.
Hold on, so here's the thing for transparency, so, so the people that don't know, would, would, would look at the council body and say, oh, they just don't wanna deal with tracks. But when we, we, we have to follow your instructions for just being legal, so if we been, for some of our years been illegal, that don't mean we should keep pushing, you know, kicking the can.
No, no, and it's, and, I don't recall any dialogue regarding wholesale doing away with programs, we had dialogue that there is no way can, or y'all brought us to have a team. And the dialogue was, and then future dialogue at other meetings was, how can we proceed with having a track program?
I, I very, very clarify, you're absolutely right, that it came about how they were being funded, who have been paid, that, that, that's better, but that was Mrs. Schmood, the, the C B car, we were thinking the fundings were coming through the city. They were raising their own money for the track team.
They're, they're.
I mean, for the track programs, you don't call it track program, the proper term would be program, because not a team is a program, but we can have program, we can't have a team.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that was a track program, it say here the budget track program, I'm gonna call it as it is, as a track program, as, as, they can raise money to help with their program, that, you know, the sponsors, that, that should be fine. I think was Mrs., misunderstood, I was saying how it came about, and I think it should be called track program, excuse, excuse me, it should be called track program, and we should fund the track program, as well as the football program, I mean, fund the program. Now, we can't call it a team, we can call it a program, and if it's a program, any program can go outside of the city and raise funds for their addition to cost of what they eat, I think we misunderstood that, that gotta pass all of them, that particular night.
That, 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 that's, that's the, that's the delineation there.
Yeah, you said, is it, is it, put it out.
But, 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 we should, we should stipulate, anything that you raise outside, anything that donated to you should be put in a separate fund, not.
And that's what, that's what we saying, that's, that's what.
Okay, 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 okay.
That's what the owner is saying.
Okay, well, let us do it properly, because the track programs start tomorrow, and we need to correct it before we leave here tonight, the track programs should, we should, we should spell out that the program, have whatever we gonna give them for the program. Anything that raised should be put in a separate fund, and move forward.
Here's the issue, here's, here's the issue, Mr. Reverend, so when, when it comes to, when it comes to doing the budget, when it comes to doing the budget, what typically what they, what they've been doing is, they've been budgeting off prior year, so they look at the budget, seeing what have, what been spent. So when they look at the, um, the year to end date, at the end of June, they look to say, hey, the track spend, I'm just gonna go off of them, say thirty six thousand dollars, but of that thirty six thousand dollars, there's donations. So, when we, when it come to budget, you budget based off what's included with the donation, and that's becoming, that's became the.
We should correct the problem, I really would disagree, we should correct the problem and move the program forward.
So, what happened is, is, i- in, in particular, it was with track, football was ready to pass, track had an amount of money that was coming from donations, which, which, and then there was some money the city was giving in. But the issue with that, as different from football, that was actually paid to coaches, paid to people traveling, paid to people doing stuff, which is a team, not a program.
But would be a problem, if we just quit, and, and reinstate the program, and state, and state, and, and when we, when we reinstate the program, and state anything that donated should be kept separate from the city fund, can, can we do that?
You, you actually won't even reinstate a program, you'd have to start a program.
Well, 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 start the program, and start the program, and anything, and, and, and spell out, anything that donated to the track team, football team, baseball, anything donated to any program should be put in a separate fund, a separate from the city, but.
Correct, and Miss Hendrick stood up that night, who, with, she's had to be an expert for a while, and she explained it, there's a, there's usually a, a league account, and then there's a, there's a city account for certain things, that are like little equipment stuff, that are general. But the uniforms come out of the, the league.
Okay, it's ten thirty, we make a motion to move on, the motion that, that don't, that what I just said, it's separate, I like to make a motion.
Well, we, that's what we accomplished with the budget.
Okay, because the model track programs are.
And, and, what I'm saying is, you'll see when, when, the audit, I checked on the audit too, the audit, you'll see it at the end of the month, and then you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. So, everybody just calm down, and we was talking about this eighteen thousand dollars, when I say it was, when it was put into a city fund, it becomes city money, and you cannot give city money to private citizens. So you gonna see when the, when the audit comes, exactly why we was trying to correct the wrong, so we can have a program. Because actually, when you violate the law, which is the man, I talked to the big battery and other people, you could get in trouble, not the city council, but the people that actually received the fund, so. We was just trying to come up with a comprehensive way to, to, to do it, because, and you can't just, you, you know, ignorance of the law is no excuse, when you put the money in, into the city fund, then. If you violate any codes or any law, then you gonna have to be held liable, and, and you can get a criminal referral.
And, and to make it clear, I was, I was under one directive when I ran city attorney, is to keep every person legal, and I gave advice that we needed to take that money out, and we can establish a program, not a team. Because of what, because of what is there, so that's why. So, I gave that advice based on what I, what I've seen and discovered.
But, oh, the mayor gone. I like to make a motion that, uh, the track program be put back, uh, the track program be put back, and that, and then everybody donated to the track program, any sport program be kept separate from the. Okay, okay, well, that, that. Have you seen that?
Give it about thirty seconds. As legal advice, I just.
Can, can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? Yeah, I'm opposed to him, all in favor? Any close?